To the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 4, 2019, a notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building filed with the clerk. We are bringing this meeting to you through Zoom. This meeting will run just like any other regular council meeting. Our multimedia director will be the Zoom administrator throughout the meeting. You will still be able to comment during the public comment sessions. When the time comes, you will click on the raise hand button and our multimedia director will then unmute each person one at a time so you may speak. Please state your name and address before you speak. Thank you for joining us.
Hold on, Mayor, got unmuted. And standby. All right, Mayor, you're good. And that space bar again is reminder. Thank you.
Okay. Can everybody please join me in the flag salute of our great nation?
Lest allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Everybody can remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops, their families, our first responders and all the healthcare workers. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into workshop. So Ed, you want to just, we have our beach plan all together and you're going to go over it for the COVID-19?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor, just for a little bit of background here, Belmar has been one of, I think, six or seven municipalities that have been on conference calls with the governor's office directly with the five beach counties. And I think it was six or seven municipalities that had beach fronts and Belmar was one that helped formulate a plan for consistency through the Memorial Day opening. So we have a plan in place and I'm going to go by, go through it. It may take me a few minutes, but I want to explain the entire plan. As everybody's aware, we had restrictions in place to have people stay home for the essential driving ban and the stay-at-home order from the governor based on executive orders. And of course, any warm day that came about, it was almost impossible to keep anybody out of the town. Not only did we experience, but all the shore communities experienced that on warmer days. We have had conference calls with the Freeholder Director Tom Arnon from Seabright down to Manasquan every week, sometimes twice a week to come up with a consistence plan to handle the summer season as the governor relaxes restrictions. So we put a plan together. If you remember, we closed the boardwalk and that was kind of crazy because we were putting people in the street, thus making them a little bit more vulnerable to traffic. At that time, it was 35 miles an hour on Ocean Avenue and it created a hazardous condition for people to walk in the street. And we had some parking restrictions in place and still that didn't deter anybody from staying out of town. So we're now on a order to make sure that we do the best to keep everybody safe, our residents and our visitors and our business owners, our first responders and all our emergency service workers. So the boardwalk is open and the following steps have been taken to manage social distancing guidelines. There's going to be a task force comprised of police officers for the Belmar Police Department, members of the Belmar Office of Urban Emergency Management and employees of the Belmar Department of Public Works. We have split the beach into four zones, First to Sixth, Sixth to Eleventh, Eleventh to Sixteenth and Sixteenth to Twentieth Avenue. We have assigned teams on foot and in the use of gators and ultrarain vehicles on those four zones with regular police officers and special police officers along with emergency management. The Emergency Emergency Operations Center will be at the command post at the Public Safety Complex, 10th Avenue and Ocean, I'm sorry, 11th Avenue and Ocean. And that's where the command post will operate out of. The task force that splits the beach into four zones will make sure that people are staying consistent with social distancing guidelines. Of course, investigation with family members and household members, that of course is an exception to the guideline. So you have to take some kind of proactive approach to make sure that everybody's following the guidelines. The police officers assigned will enforce all New Jersey state laws and Belmar bar ordinances such as drinking on the beach, smoking on the beach, beach badge regulations if they don't have a badge. So the police officers are going to handle all the law enforcement aspects as well as the social distancing. Every gate attendant will have a digital tally counter that will be utilized to count patrons on and off each beach. And every beach gate will be staffed with gate attendants. So there'll be a count that will be utilized by the gate attendants. To maintain order on the boardwalk, confirm social distancing guidelines, the following precautions and procedures have been implemented. We removed all the benches from the boardwalk to discourage gathering and disrupt social distancing guidelines. The benches being removed are temporary until everything clears from the governor's office. For those who have memorial benches on the boardwalk, they will be put back as soon as possible. They've been taken off the beach, taken to the Department of Public Works and cleaned. And we have them marked so they'll go on the exact same board that they come off of the boardwalk. There's no bicycles, skateboards, roller blades or any other mechanical personal movement devices allowed on the boardwalk at any time. The bicycle racks, I know this was a concern, but we removed the bicycle racks and placed them on the boardwalk bump outs so not to impede the flow of pedestrian traffic on the boardwalk. If everybody's noticed, we've placed barrels in the center lane of the boardwalks so people can walk to the right, stay to the right to maintain some type of order for social distancing. Okay? We didn't need the bike racks there because that would impede the flow of pedestrian traffic. Of course, no dogs are permitted on the boardwalk or the beach and no ball playing or any athletic activity during, on the beach pursuant to Belmar ordinances. We have been taking off some of the poles down at the beach for volleyball because that is no longer permitted on the beach. We'll have an abundance of social distancing guidelines signers posted throughout the oceanfront area and throughout the town. At all of our shower locations, the water fountains have been removed and the handles have been replaced with motion detectors. So you will not have to even touch any of the showers down at the beach. They will be, there will be a motion detection as you wager him in front of the device, the water will come on when you move away from the device, the water will shut off. So it's a hands-free situation at the showers and then we'll have the Department of Public Works on a sanitation schedule sanitizing those shower areas. There'll be social media posts utilized to educate the public about operational guidelines, rules and regulations. If the beach capacity exceeds acceptable social distancing guidelines, we will post that information in a timely fashion to coincide with Monmouth County Freeholders' Know Before You Go campaign. And that's also going to be on our site at belmar.com and visit monmouthcounty.com. You would, once this plan is published, it will go on our website and everything that I'm reading from right now will be available on our website as well as, I believe, the Monmouth County site. We will be utilizing the drone that Belmar has. It will be over the water. It will send images back to the command post. So we'll have a real idea and a timeframe of when the beach starts to fill up and if social distancing cannot be achieved. One of the things that we have to do is if you want to go to the Eighth Avenue Beach and of course, everybody wants to be down by the water. We want to make sure we utilize the water lines of the boardwalk. You'll be asked to move to another beach so we can keep the social distance guidelines in place. There'll be visual observations from the Public Safety Complex at the Crow's Nest. At any time when the distancing guidelines are not achievable, the corrective actions will be implemented up to and including closing the beach to maintain approved levels of safety and security. In our tag booths where we sell the beach badges and in all of our booths along Ocean Avenue, there's going to be signs that, that all sales are final and that if the beach is closed for any reason based on weather or capacity issues, there'll be no refunds. We'll have what's known as the Belmar Friendship Force, ambassadors of goodwill. It's a community-based group that takes a non-competitive, non-deescalation approach to be ambassadors of goodwill to our visitors and our residents. They'll be clearly identified by shirts and they'll be asking people to, excuse me, comply with social distancing guidelines in a non-competitive type situation. They're not there to enforce any laws or any guidelines, they're just there to help if people have questions in regards to where to get badges or where to move along the boardwalk so we can maintain a clear lane of traffic. They, along with all their beach attendants and all our staff, will be provided with protection equipment to include gloves, wipes, masks and hand sanitizer. We have closed the Belmar Surf Camp, Belmar Junior Lifeguards, the Surf Camp concession. The beach playgrounds are closed and posted and volleyball camp is all closed until further noticed. At our ticket booth and the gate attendants for the badge sales, they'll be supplied with face coverings, gloves and hand sanitizer. We've ordered six additional tag booths so we can keep them separated. So there should be not two people in a booth, but one person in each booth to make sure that our employees are protected. We've also installed plexiglass barriers to make sure that they're also patrons as well as the badge sellers are protected. We're taking two of the badge booths that we purchased and we're putting them on Silver Lake where we can sell daily badges so we can take people off of the boardwalk so there's no lines forming for daily badges. So again, not to impede the flow of traffic on the boardwalk. We'll have sign posts in regards to our booths of what I talked about with the keeping the beach open with everybody's cooperation and the guidelines that are listed inside every booth and inside Taylor Pavilion. There'll be a six-foot protection zone clearly delineated for our gate attendants. There will be no hand-to-hand transaction with tickets or badges from the gate attendants as there was in the past when they used to rip the tickets. We've purchased currency counting machines to again minimize contact with any type of cash, excuse me, for our employees. On the website and on this order will be the season beach badge sales and it will indicate when they're on sale, the hours, the cost and how long they will go, all the restrictions and all the regulations on beach badge sales. Lifeguards will also be equipped with protection equipment. Our chief lifeguard, Harry Horson, has a plan in place for every beach to be protected along with the protection of the lifeguards themselves. There is sanitation, sanitizing schedule for the lifeguards to perform on, on the bench itself, whether it be one lifeguard on top, one lifeguard on the stand lower and one lifeguard in the beach is up to the chief lifeguard on any given day. All the equipment, like I said, would be sanitized and this all conforms with the United States Life Saving Association guidelines. Our restrooms, personal protection equipment to our restrooms, there'll be spots on the boardwalk themselves to indicate social distancing at six feet. That will be at our Taylor Pavilion, at all our tag booths and at our restrooms. We have additional personnel to staff each restroom to handle crowd control to make sure that there's social distancing and we limit the capacity at any one time in the restrooms. We have a full scheduled sanitation procedure implemented from the Department of Public Works with disinfectant sprayers as well as medical-grade ultraviolet lights for each restroom facility and face coverings are urged once entering the bathrooms. As far as our beachfront parking, all the kiosks have been taken away and we have now parked mobile for paid parking on the beachfront east side of Ocean Avenue. For further information, you can refer to our website as well as all the signage that's done on the oceanfront area. As far as the lifeguards concerns, they are equipping themselves with the newest, with all new first aid equipment supplied in conjunction with the Belmar First Aid Squad to include Ambu bags. Ambu bags are utilized in place of the face valve that was also used in CPR. So there's an Ambu bag that they're going to utilize to limit the skin-to-skin contact with any one that they have to go in the water that is in distress or has problem in the, in the surf. So basically this plan will be posted and all these regulations will be on our website.
Thank you, Business Administrator Kirshenbaum. Just one, just one thing, we're only urging people to wear masks into the bathrooms? I thought that we were going to make that mandatory that they have to have masks on.
They have to wear masks. I said urge, they have to wear masks.
It's mandatory.
Restrooms, on the boardwalk, we suggest it, but of course, it's not mandatory. We don't enforce it, but we'd like to have people wearing masks.
Yeah. Yeah, because we're, we're going to encourage people to wear masks. We just can't force them on the beach and boardwalk.
That's correct.
Okay. Is any, anybody, any of the council members have any questions on the plan for the beach? John, can you unmute Jim McCracken? He has a few questions.
Yes, sir. It's clunky on my side. And remember, guys, space bar would be a great help. Thank you so much. Back to you.
Councilman McCracken?
Okay. Thank you. You know, I've been, it's disturbing being on the council and knowing how much work you and the mayor and the Office of Emergency Management, Department of Public Works and everybody has put into this, seeing these photos that are doctored by the Main Street media, you know, showing people close together. But you know, when closely looking at these photos, you see that the light poles are close together and you could see the breakers or something, you know, down in Spring Lake that the photo was compressed, you know? But when photos like that are posted on these social media outlets that are just not true depicting the situation, certainly it creates, you know, hysteria and a challenge for all of our residents. So for those who, where is the, could you just repeat the social media site that they can go to that's authorized by the town to get correct and updated information rather than if they see these types of, you know, so where they can go to get the accurate information?
Sorry, everyone, those mute buttons are not fun right now. Sorry.
I got it.
Go ahead.
All right. So www.belmar.com, there's rules and regulations and we'll change it. All the information will be there.
There's a tab right there. It'll also be on the visitmonmouth.com, I believe. Basically, all the plans that we just suggested and we encourage people, we return every phone call. We return every email, every phone call. We prefer to have you call in because if we were to sit and try to type out every email, we'd never get any work done. So normally what we do is we get a phone call, we ask you to call the office and we'll give you real time, up to, up to speed, up to date factual information rather than relying on unreliable sources. So belmar.com, we're going to have our social media personnel on staff all Memorial Day weekend long to update. If in fact, we can achieve the social distancing guidelines set forth by the state, we're going to immediately go to social media outlets to advise people that if you're coming to Belmar, the beach will be closed. So belmar.com is one and visitmonmouth.com for Monmouth County. But that will all be posted on the Belmar website.
I also understand that the governor in a recent press conference referenced Belmar and the efforts that have been put into this plan. Is that true? I didn't see that press conference, but I understood he gave some very positive comments.
Conference last week when we talked about the reopening of the beaches complimented the mayor and his staff on the plan that was put forward as very complete and comprehensive.
Lastly, you know, we engaged citizens who care about our community and their neighbors. I know the bathrooms weren't open yet to the public, but they're opening this weekend. And you know, I did get some complaints and emails about public urination over the weekend on private property when, prior to these restrooms being open. And I just want to stress and clarify that we have a zero tolerance policy for that. And if people find that there's someone urinating on their property or acting inappropriate or littering, they should call 911 and report that immediately so the police can act on that, correct?
Correct. We, our guests and our visitors and our residents to call the police when they see anything occurring, they have to be our eyes and our ears to make sure this all works. Last Saturday, when the line was long on the Taylor Pavilion, it was refreshing to see how many people respectful and were practicing social distancing. The Office of Emergency Management, along with the Belmar Police Department, has contacted most of the businesses on Ocean Avenue. And we are stressing to them that they have to have an employee outside, making sure that anybody purchasing product from their establishments are maintaining social distancing and not crowding the sidewalks or the, any, any part of the roadway. So we're still taking an active role in contacting all the establishments within town that can have curbside pickup and have them make sure that they maintain social distancing or, so we have no issues. As far as the bathrooms, we are opening Memorial Day. One of the problems in the past week, couple of weeks is we have not been able to get enough staff to fulfill staffing levels that we needed to open up all the bathrooms. If we're going to open up the bathrooms, we've got to make sure there's a sanitizing program in place, the one that I outlined in our, in our plan. So we're hopefully have enough staff to, and we plan to open up bathrooms no matter what. If we have to bring additional help, then we will. But you just can't open up a bathroom in this day and age without having the proper staff to enforce social distancing, making sure people are wearing masks and sanitizing it properly for our visitors.
Councilman Brennan, do you want to say something as well?
All right. Well, I have a couple of things, but since my mic's working, I might as well just talk as, yeah, go for it. Yes, I can. The Belmar official Facebook page is, you can't, it's backwards, Belmar, New Jersey, spelled out New Jersey. And the COVID-19 alert is our header photo right now. If you go to any other page looking for information about Belmar, you don't see this COVID-19 alert picture, then you're looking at something that's not official. Okay? Just want to make sure people understand that. I did hear the governor do the shout out to Belmar and it was very impressive because I had, I've already been talking to the mayor and the business administrator about what we were planning on doing. And I must say, I really have to hand it to Mr. Kirshenbaum because I had questions and suggestions. He listened to everything I had to say. I see several of the things I suggested incorporated in the plan. I really appreciate that. I had a couple of questions. I want to make sure everybody understands that. One of the things, our season badges are still only going to be sold at Taylor Pavilion, correct? The same thing we've done in the past. Hopefully, the line this past weekend was the line we normally would have seen on Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. Let's, let's hope that's the case. One of the things I've heard is that unlike other years, we're going to do bad sales. In the past, it was Memorial Day weekend and the next couple of weekends until it's basically when school was out. But now we're just going to start Memorial Day and it's going to do it every day. Okay, that's fine. I know people are, there are people who normally wouldn't be available, who can do the work right now because their regular places are closed. One of the things that the most common question I'm getting from people is, why aren't we doing some kind of online sales for daily badges with an app like some other, some of the other towns are doing? And I want to make sure everyone's clear on this. My understanding is we've already, we already had its deal set up with the vendor. We had everything set up. And although we, we were discussing how to do electronic badge sales for dailies, it was something we weren't going to be able to do this year anyway. Is there any way we could take a look at somehow starting that after the holidays over, that's once the season started, just even just for dailies? Can we, I mean, because if you're like me, we're getting inundated with mail from vendors who are saying, we can do this, we can do this. I mean, what do you think?
We want to make sure it's the right fit for Belmar. We agree. We're trying to get to a hands-free situation and everything. Talking to the beach director, of course, we have all our season badges in place. We just have to come up with the right program to make sure it works for accounting purposes. As you have to be mindful of every dollar that could spend on the beach. For beach badges goes right to the beach utility. We have to make sure that the counting stays in place. So to try to switch to midstream, we're going to look at it. I can't guarantee anything, but it's definitely, we're thinking about next year on how to.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would think for next year, it's, it's something, it's clear we need that. So if we can't get it this year, we should plan on having it next year. I also wanted to address something that Councilman McCracken said about, you know, look, the media, they're, they're looking for clicks and they're looking to sell papers and they know that if they put something up that they know people are going to get excited about, whether it's good excitement or bad, that's what they're trying to do. And I think it's really important that people, when you see pictures, because I had the same reaction a lot of people had, Mr. Kirshenbaum can attest to it. I was like, what's going on? I really appreciate the fact that he went to the trouble to find a place that could explain how telephoto lenses work and, you know, and I felt a little, little stupid because I've done photography work in the past and I should have remembered that telephoto shortens the, the length of field. And I, big shout to Steve Lacko for sitting, backing it up. A big shout out to Steve Lacko, very good, good local photographer.
If you look at that picture, Essex and Sussex in the picture, it is 2.6 miles away.
I know. Essex and Sussex, it looks like it's on top of people.
Right.
But that's not what they're looking for. They're looking to get you excited and get you to look at their page and that way they can sell more ads. What bothered me more than that, I understand people's reaction. I understand people are very anxious and for a lot of reasons. And it's all understandable. But what bothered me was when certain people were presented with an explanation about why the photo looked the way it was and this is what it looks like from up in the air. And you could clearly see that people were social distancing and the comments from people that I saw on social media who were actually in the line saying, oh, this is fine, it was not crowded, it was, people were social distancing, it was really no big deal. Those were completely disregarded by some people. They just said, they were the ones saying fake news to that. I mean, look, it, common sense, it, common sense, really. Everybody just take it down a couple of notches, really, really? We are all really hoping that things will work out. It would be, I mean, it would really help if a couple of things definitely went our way. But we're, I think, I think that we're really ready. I really think that the work that's gone into this plan is really the best. I mean, people have to understand, we've been told very clearly by the state, we cannot impede anyone's access to the beach under normal circumstances at all unless they violate some, some kind of regulation. And because we have social distancing rules, now that's the thing we can do as far as limiting access. But if somebody comes to the beach and, and the beach is closed because there's too many people and you got to wait, we can't tell them, we're not going to sell you a badge. Right? They have to be able to buy the badge. We cannot deny them access. If they're willing to buy the badge and sit in their car and wait for two hours, they're allowed to do it. We can't say no. I think what the county is doing, really making sure people know that they have to check before they come down here and supplying a website. that they have to check before they come down here and supplying a website that will keep up, you know, real time updates about the conditions on any of the local beaches. It makes sense to just check before you come down here. We don't want you to drive all the way down and then not be able to go on the beach. So just, again, common sense. It, we can't act like it's all normal and the regular old thing, the regular old thing. But we also can't act like it's impossible either.
Correct.
You know what I mean? We have to, we have to do the best we can to accommodate the law. People have a right to go on the beach. We, you know, we can charge them a user fee so we can clean up. I mean, I just think it's, we need to take it down a couple of notches and really, really, really trust that we are working as hard as we can to make sure everyone is safe.
This plan is very fluid and it changes hour by hour. We'll have the entire command staff out there making decisions as we get real factual information in. So it's just not read the plan and just let it, let it lie in all the plan and make adjustments where adjustments need to be made. And like I said, I was down there all day Saturday and Sunday. People were respectful. They understand the challenges that we're facing. There's no playbook in place here to ever go through something like this. We've never been through something like this. So all we can do is hopefully, hope the best of people that we work together and be able to change and adapt with our plan.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to say one other thing. I know people are upset that we took the benches off the boardwalk. Some people are upset. I, I found that it made it so much easier to social distance, the amount of space that becomes available. And we're not the only town doing it. Avon moved their benches, Bradley moved their benches and roped them off. You know, it, it's, it's, everybody's doing it because the idea is you need to create the opportunity for social distancing. And it works, it works. That's it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilor Carvelli, do you have something to say?
Yeah, can you?
Yeah. Yep, you're good.
Thank you. Yeah. So just a couple of things. One is, you know, for sure, we've been fielding emails, phone calls, text messages. And, you know, I answer them to the best of, to my ability, but ultimately I am referring them up to Administrator Kirshenbaum. And I can assure you that, that he is contacting everybody and fielding every, everything that comes in. Some of them are praise, some more of them are not. You know, and I just, I really hope that everybody watching really understands that, you know, the suggestions and the frustrations are being heard. They're being considered. Nothing's being ignored. But ultimately, you know, we need to, or OEM needs to, you know, take those things into account with the other logistics and directives in order to formulate action. It's, it's not like we can just take everybody's, it's like playing whack-a-mole, right? Like, i- if you just take everybody's suggestions, you're just going to be, end up, you know, other problems are going to pop up here and there. So nothing's ignored, nothing's taken for granted. But, you know, ultimately, the actions and the changes that are implemented are through a careful process of determining what the right thing to do is. And, and look, like Mr. Kirshenbaum said, there's no playbook here. And, you know, are there going to be missteps? Probably. Is that okay? I think so. As long as, you know, we keep adapting and doing, doing our best, I, I, I think, I think we're, and I think everybody here is. So as long as everybody can have faith in that, I understand everybody's not going to be happy with, with what's happening or what we ultimately do, but it's done with the best intention. So that aside, the only thing that I had a question on, on the Beach Operations Draft was the Friendship Force. And I was wondering if you could dive into that a little bit and just talk about if somebody was interested, how do they get involved? What are the requirements? Like, is there, do we, you know, is there an age range that that's there? And then if so, you know, is, are they given any kind of training? Are we just thrown into the wolves?
This is how we started. It was through the Community Policing Program. And there'll be a little bit of training, but it's more to take like a softer approach up on a boardwalk to say, you know, only with your cooperation are we going to be able to keep these beaches open. Because, you know, a lot of people are going to have to take responsibility for themselves. We, we're not going to be able to watch every single person. They're just going to be a little bit more eyes and ears for us up and down the boardwalk. And if on the beach, we need them. But our special class ones that will be walking in the different zones, the, the, the whole theme of the thing is, when you're talking to people to spread out, is we don't want to close our beaches and we don't want the governor to close our beaches. We're going to have a lot of eyes on us because as, as like Councilman McCracken said, we were mentioned on the governor's report. We did a lot of work with the governor's office. There was, I think there was eight municipalities picked. And we all worked together to put up, come up with a plan to put together. I don't remember them all. I know it was us and Hasburg Park. But so we worked and, and our business administrator did an unbelievable job with OEM and trying to put a plan together. And like Councilman Carvelli said, never, it, there's going to be hiccups. The perfect example was Saturday with the beach badge sales. One of the things we overlooked was we weren't selling badges in Borough Hall, and nobody knew if the beach was going to be open or not. So when it got advertised that the beaches were open and all these people that normally come walking in and out of Borough Hall for two months, all came to the boardwalk. And we didn't, we didn't calculate that. But we had our officers up there making sure there was social distancing and doing everything they can. So, you know, that was one of the little things that was a little hiccup in the plan because we didn't, we didn't think of that aspect of it, that everybody was coming down to buy beach badges at the same time. But I gotta, I gotta say, the whole team, everybody in place, when we talked to the governor's office, we have the business administrator there, Office of Emergency Management, we have the police, police chief there, lifeguard supervisor, and of course, our, our beach administrator, Jean Corey. So everybody is in the room when we were making all these decisions to come up with. So, but, you know, we are going to really work hard because we don't want this, we don't want to be closing our beaches down. So the, the program we're putting in place for the volunteers, it went out to all the community policing people first. And then I think we have a Skype, or we have a Zoom meeting tomorrow with them. They will have shirts, they'll be trained, they're not going to get into confrontation with anybody. They're just going to ask, listen, you have to social distance or we're going to have to close our beaches down. So that's, that's going to be their role. If you know anybody, Councilman Carvelli, that would like to join it, we always were looking for people. Hopefully, that, you know, that they, they could work alongside of us. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, that's how we started it with the Community Policing Program.
Am I muted? Oh, yeah. No, that, yes, that, thank you. That's, that's all I was interested in. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Wong, you have anything?
There you go. You're good.
Thank you, John.
You got it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. I want a big thanks to Ed, who I probably annoy every day with a million phone calls. And I'm sorry, but you're always there to answer them for me. You know, for those of us who've lived here forever, well, close to it, you have to remember Memorial Day has always been a big weekend for us. This week, this year, it is different because of COVID. But nonetheless, it's always been the opening of summer. We are always inundated with people on Memorial Day. And this time in particular, I know I've been locked in this house for almost 12 weeks. I'm out of my mind. Don't you think I'd love to be up on the boardwalk? But I have to be responsible for myself. So I can't. And I can imagine being locked up in a house with three children under eight years old for two months. You want to get out and come to the sand, and there's no better place than sand than Belmar. But you're going to be responsible. And Ed and Mike Campbell and the mayor, everybody, the OEM team have worked day and night. Things have changed daily and hourly over the past two months. It's remarkable. I think the plan that's in place is excellent. Again, as Ed said, it can change, is a possibility it can change. But right now, it seems to be the best plan available. And people have to learn to be responsible for themselves. And I just wish that everybody would calm down. Yeah, I could be a little edgy right now because I've been locked up. So I understand that. But please don't be nasty. There's no reason for anyone to be nasty. And this is what's going around. And it's hurtful for me as a resident of Belmar, as a member of the council, that people are being nasty when we are breaking our you-know-whats, trying to get this right for you. There's no reason for that. There's no reason for hate in this time. I just want people to calm down. It's going to be okay. We'll get through this. Yes, as Mark has said, there might be a couple of hiccups, but that's expected. But we have the best possible plan and the best possible people to implement this. Give us a chance, please. And don't be nasty. It's not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are you on mute? And Bravo? Okay. Hold on, please. I'm sorry. From your muted, and I did not do that. Hold on, please. Standby. There you go. It's clunky. Guys, we're, we're getting a little lag on Councilman Wong. I think everyone in the world is on Zoom. Thank you for your patience. And if I may at this time, just want to let you know that our Facebook page, the official Facebook page, if you search facebook.com/belmar07719, our zip code. So you put in Belmar07719 in Facebook with the social distancing thing at the top. That's how you know you have the official Facebook page. Thank you very much. I'll win the show.
John, if you can put out on our Facebook and Belmar website about if they want, if everybody's coming down to sign up to our Twitter account, so we can, we could get the word out on Twitter also.
Yes, sir. I'm going to make a list of all our social platforms so everyone knows where to go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for workshop? Okay. All right. April, we're going to move on to petitions. If anybody has a petition, you can either email it to us or drop it over Borough Hall. Approval minutes. So moved.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 15 meeting?
Second.
Is that Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. We're going to go to reports of council. I know we did a lot of talking already, but Councilman McCracken.
Yeah, my committees have not met since our last meeting. The Housing Authority meeting is the first Monday of every month. So we have a meeting coming up in June. The Shade Tree Commission meeting is tomorrow, this coming Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilman Carrvelli.
Thank you. I'm usually first.
Oh, sorry.
That's how I steal everybody's thunder. I, I don't have any thunder to steal this week. You know, I did, before we left workshop, I, I did want to maybe suggest, is it possible to, on the sign out on Route 35, to maybe put our social media accounts so that, you know, people can, can sign up?
That's a great idea.
We have time on that. Yeah.
They noted, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So let's see, harbor permission, we've canceled that. We haven't had a meeting there in, in quite some time. And I'm not sure if, if we're going to try to go virtual on that one. The BVP is obviously on hiatus right now. I did have a planning board meeting last night. You know, we had one, one application for change of use in the Belmar Plaza. We had the Technical Designer Review Committee. We, we, we took a look at the 900 Main Street project that was late last week. And something that came up today was the website team made some tweaks to the mobile site. I guess I hadn't realized it, not having really browsed the site on my, on my phone, but it presents differently than, than the desktop. And I guess this was brought to my attention by, by a resident. And we made some tweaks there to make getting access to the Zoom meetings easier. So now, if you are accessing on a mobile device, there's two buttons that you can get to these meeting, you know, Zoom, Zoom invites. And one is through the calendar button and the meeting videos button. And John, maybe you could put that on social media too, that, you know, that, that screen and point to those two buttons at some point this week. Yep, that, there it is. Yeah, it's the, yeah, the calendar. And then if you scroll down a little bit more is the Zoom meeting one, the video meeting one. Yeah. So anyway, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bugafusco for calling that out and that we were, that the website team was able to make the change quickly. So that's it. That's my, that's my report. Everybody stay, stay safe, stay well, enjoy Memorial Day. Hopefully, this weather gets a little warm and we can get outside. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. As you had mentioned before, tomorrow, tomorrow, late tomorrow afternoon, we're having a community policing meeting with the zone chiefs. We've held off on the meeting because we've had some changes to the website. We've had zone chiefs retire, new one added, plus the fact that things have been changing day after day. And so now that everything is, is in place, we can continue with our meeting tomorrow. With the parks and recreation, we're going to try to have a meeting next week outside. Oh, I'm so looking forward to this with our face masks. And there's only five of us and to keep a social distance outdoors and try and have our first meeting. ADA, if this works out, we're going to try it with the ADA too. And outside of that, we haven't had any meetings, but we're going forward. And now with the weather getting a little better, hopefully this will work. So we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Environmental Commission did have a Zoom meeting this past Thursday. And they had actually, what done? They, they've applied for a grant from a group called ANJEC, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions. Every year gives up grants up to $5,000. And what they're looking for is the money to finish actually printing and binding the environmental resource inventory. It's a really important document. They've been working on it for really a couple of years to update it because it was more than 10 years old when they started the project. It's really, once it's done, it's going to be distributed to mayor and council, all planning board members, all zoning board members. It's supposed to be used to help make decisions about regarding sustainability for proposed projects and things like that. And sustainability is the big word. It's the, you know, that's, as I spoke about when the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection had their webinar that I listened to a couple of weeks ago, that was the word they were talking about in dealing with climate change. How are you going to make things sustainable in the face of these new, these new conditions? So they did that. And they actually, even though ANJEC extended the deadline, you know, for COVID, they managed to get it in before the original deadline. So that's good for them. They were really ready to go. And thanks to Business Administrator Kirshenbaum for the letter that was required. He got that right back to us. They had an update. They definitely asked about the Seaport redevelopment, which we all know after last council meeting is basically not happening right now. And we're just, you know what? We have other things to worry about right now. Let's leave that alone. It, it, it'll come around when it comes around, if it does at all. They did have some recommendations to go in to the planning board about the redevelopment at 900 Main Street. And I can tell you that their main concern was, because nobody, nobody except for And I can tell you that their main concern was, because nobody, nobody except for Ed Lippincott, who's the Chair of the Environmental Commission, he's on the TDRC, the Technical Design Review Committee that looks at these redevelopment projects. He's the only one that's seen like a real site plan. I've, all I've seen is what was presented when they were looking to get the designation changed. The main concern they have is the way they're handling stormwater runoff. To put it mildly, it's not innovative. Their basic thing is they're talking about sheet runoff, which is when it rains really hard, the water runs right across the concrete into the street and then goes down. Now, we all know that that's not, that's not a good solution, especially when the DEP is talking about how climate change is gonna make rain events so much more intense. And we've all seen that already. We've seen it happening already. Like, like I said, said last time, I'm getting new gutters on my house. And the gutter guy said, don't get three-inch gutters. They're not gonna handle it. You need four-inch gutters because that's what happens now. So there, the Environmental Commission is asking for the developer to try to come up with something a little more proactive, maybe dry wells, something like that. Just having the water run down a gutter and go right into the street is, at the least, it's irrespective of their neighbors. It's disrespectful for the neighbors. I mean, they're gonna have to deal with all this water. We know what, what, where that water goes from that point. It goes straight down and tries to get into Silver Lake, which is what it's supposed to do. But if you, if, if you can reduce the amount of water that's doing that, it's not much easier to avoid any other kind of problems with flooding. And they also had a big discussion. There's a resident named Drew Fromkin, has a house on South Lake Drive, has written, got in touch with Councilwoman Juan. And she put him in touch with me. And I put him in touch with Ed Lippincott. And he attended the Environmental Commission meeting. And we're trying to talk about ways to improve the quality of the water in Silver Lake. There are some ideas. One of the things we really have to do is I gotta give a big shout out to Mike Campbell and the DPW for the way they maintain the vegetation around the lake. You can't just let it grow wild, but you can't cut it all down either. Because if there's no vegetation, there's no filtration of stormwater. And from the other end, if you're, if you're a goose on the lake and you see something that's wide open right up to the grass, that's where you're gonna walk and poop and stuff like that. So keeping the vegetation, they, they cut it back so that there's a nice line of vegetation along the water enough to filter the stormwater, keep the geese on the lake. And, and, but at the same time, keep it from becoming overgrown, which is really also good for, for the quality of the water in Silver Lake. We're gonna look and see in the future what kind of options we have. One of the main things we have to keep in mind is Silver Lake is definitely a part of our stormwater management plan. All the storm drains on that whole end of town, they send all the water into Silver Lake. And that's why we put an outfall pipe under A Street out to the inlet so we can handle that water. And it's really set up for that now. But at the same time, it brings in a lot of pollution, which we need to see what we can do as far as improving the quality of the lake so that maybe we can put fish in the lake and people can fish and stuff like that. So that's what one of their, their discussion was at the Environmental Commission. And I also have to report that is Councilwoman Juan's birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. All right. That's my report.
Thank you. Just to get back to Ninth Avenue Project, I've asked Mike Campbell to take a look and to see where we have storm drains in that area to try, when it comes to the planning board, try to get them into a storm drain. I know Mike's working on that already. So I just have a couple of things on my report. I gotta, I gotta thank Mike Campbell again and his DPW crew for getting the whole beachfront ready in a very short period of time. So they've been down there working to get everything done like you, like some, Ed brought up that a lot of people aren't gonna be happy where the bicycle racks are, but we gotta keep that boardwalk so it can flow. And the bicycles, the racks where they were, where the bikes would be sticking out in the boardwalk causing more problems with social distancing. So Mike Graces, Graces, Graces will say, oh, yeah, sure, we could do that. So if everybody sees the bikes racks, they're all tied in off the boardwalk. And I know some people aren't gonna be happy, but we have to keep everything moving. You know, I wanna thank our police department, all the residents of town, our beachfront staff. Everybody through this time has been really, really stepping up and doing a great job. Even, even our staff that's in Borough Hall is, you know, they're working. And it's, it's a difficult time for everybody, especially watching their family and everything. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned everybody that, that's employed by the Borough Belmar because it's tough times. And, you know, they still have to worry about their families that come to work. So I do, we do really appreciate that. I'm gonna bring up something that a lot of people aren't gonna be happy with, but we're trying to figure out how to do memorial services down, Memorial Day down at, down at the field. It might have to be doing it on Zoom or figuring out something. But I just wanna let everybody know we're working on it. You're gonna have to watch our website and social media outlets on how we're gonna pull it off. I, I really, I really don't wanna cancel it, but somehow we gotta, we gotta have it. So the plan is in place today. We're begging all the Office of Emergency Management Staff of the county and the state. And they're all telling us that everybody else has canceled it, so we should just cancel it. But we're gonna try to do something. And that's all I have. So we're gonna move on to public session on any, just on the resolution items. We'll have a public session at the end of the meeting for anything else.
Okay, standby. Okay, attendees, you can raise your hand. No calling you the best I can with this technology. Thank you. Standby, I have one hand. Matt, are you there?
I am here.
Matt and Lauren. Okay, go ahead and say your name and where you're from.
My name is Laura Powers. I live at 104 Fifth Avenue here in Belmar. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you for all of the members of council who commented about being a little bit more friendly and not getting so wound up. Because I do read some of the comments on our
This is, this is, these are questions for just the resolution items. You'll be able to
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the end of the meeting.
I thought it was the public, I said, I will
No, no, no. The public portion is right at the end of the meeting. These are just for our resolution items.
I apologize. I'll wait till then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, please. Raise your hand again when it's, when you'd like to speak. Put your hand down now, please. Thank you. Standby, will I do that, everybody? And Joan coming, one moment, please. Hello? Joan, are you there? Go ahead.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Where you from?
Okay. Joan Corallo, A Street. Resolution 22112, the Storm Recovery Reserves. How much money is in there?
You know that one? Yeah. Our Business Administrator's gonna answer you on that.
Okay. Ed.
Hey, Joan, how are you?
I'm good. How about you?
Good. The Storm Recovery, the state allows us to plan ahead for storms. So our CFO and finance people put forth a Storm Recovery Fund that we can carry from year to year. Let me just find my paperwork. It started out with $25,000. And of course, where that money comes from is if you don't snowplow or salt or sand, we're allowed to keep that. Because if you remember July of last year, we had a wind shear come through, which caused a lot of damage with trees. That's the funding that we have in place to have our DPW go out and either handle storm-related events or snow plowing, sanding and salting. So we were blessed without a lot of snow, but that $25,000 went into the Storm Recovery Mode. And that's now in the COVID account based on the state of emergency declared by the governor. So that's where that's at now. As a matter of fact, it's been utilized. And we've started a account for our COVID-related expenses. We are filling out our ICS 214 forms for FEMA and for the CARE Act so we can be reimbursed for anything COVID-related. So that's where that money is. And that's where, that's how we're handling that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Stable talking. And now we have Maria. Standby to talk. I hit the button and it should go. There you are, Maria.
Hi, this is Maria, 1246 Pine Tree Way. I just also had a question about 202112. And so it's anything COVID-related? So would that include extra staffing? Or I know you're having those no-touch showers. Can that also be put to technology that we might need to purchase for maybe mobile beach passes or something where we're not touching the cash?
Anything that we do to prevent the spread of COVID coronavirus can be utilized. I can give you examples. We've, any type of PPE, personal protection equipment, the showers that we put the motion detectors on, it was not a normal expense. That, that will be reimbursed, reimbursed by the CARE Act or FEMA. Anything that we do to the extra tag booths that we're purchasing, we bought six, I believe. That's gonna be covered, the barrels and the cones for social distancing, any of the signs, anything that we can do as well as moving forward to prevent in our buildings and our, in the, in the Borough Buildings with either ultraviolet lights or things of that nature, those are the things that's gonna be utilized for. So we, we've documented since March 1st. We, we took the High Road and knew this was coming. So we've documented everything. Our financial team has, has done an amazing job as long, as well as our Department of Public Works and all of our department heads. Actually, you have, it's documentation. That's what, that's what you have to do to get reimbursed. So yes, it can be utilized for all those types of situations moving forward.
Just, just tell her that.
So then why can't we use that for mobile or electronic badge sales to be implemented? I mean, we are in a pandemic. This would, this is not the year to say, maybe next year.
Well, it's not.
Well, I could answer that real quick. Maria, we have been working. We were trying to work with the Park Mobile System so that we can get electronic beach badges. We've been working with our beach director to, to see if it could be done. The problem is to implement something like that. We wouldn't be able to get it done in August because it takes a little time to put it all in place and how we're gonna coordinate doing it. But I'm with you. We've been talking about it. We reached out to a couple of different companies to figure out how you could just take your phone and zip it onto the beach would be ideal. But with our beach director and staff that we, he's going, he's really working hard to get all our staffing in because a lot of the older staff on the beach are, they're not coming back this year. And because of the COVID. You know, that, that's understandable. They're, they're a little bit afraid of it. So it's one of those things that's on, on, we're, we're not taking it lightly because as we move into the future, I really wanna get that done.
Thank you. I appreciate your taking it so seriously. And August is better than next year for that. In the meantime, can we use the V-plee that Asbury, Bradley, Ocean Grove, Seaside, Long Branch, Manasquan are using where it's just something that you download on your phone and it doesn't need to be part of Park Mobile? It is a little bit more expensive for the person purchasing. But if that's something that, you know, someone could choose to be safer or skip time where they have exposure on the line, that would be really helpful. Can we do that?
We have been in touch with the gentleman at Asbury account. And we're trying to get a time with him to see what we can do.
Thank you. No time like the present, please. I know you're working very hard, but this is something very heavy on all of our hearts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Standby. And now we got a phone number here. Allowed to talk. Yes, phone number 268. Their name and where you're from, please. Hello? Standby. Okay. Hello? This is a phone line, so possibly they are not there. We'll come back to you. Please raise your hand again if you were trying to talk and you cannot reach us. Standby, please. We have Gerald coming in. Standby. And unmuting Gerald. Standby. I don't know why. All right. Jude, go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. This is Jerry Buckafusco, 409 Fifth Avenue. I, I had a question on Resolution 202117 about the temporary budget. And when I was looking at, this is the same resolution that was passed. There was one passed in January 201934. And then there was another one passed, I think, in April. The question I have is that the resolution itself doesn't seem to, percentage-wise, to the temporary budget. Because in the second paragraph, it says not exceeding 26.25% of the total operating appropriations in the 2019 budget. And as I look at it, I mean, the first one that was done, obviously at the beginning of the year, was a lot less than the, or was 26.25%. But now, I mean, just looking, for example, at the current fund, well, the total for the current fund is $13.9 million. And you don't have to do a lot of figuring to just realize that that's, that's way more than 26.25% of the total operating expenditures. Because for 2019, when you take away the debt service, the subtotal was 15.1 million. So we're at 13.9 million. And comparing that to 15.1 million, we're way over. It's like 78% of the 2019 budget. Can anybody just explain what, you know, why the resolution says 26.25%?
I don't have my CFO here, so I can't go over the percentage of numbers with you. But all I know is that the governor's office is working with all the CFOs because of this COVID-19 and working with them to, we have to put in another temporary budget because we don't have numbers in from the county or the state or anybody yet on how all this is working. So the governor is giving us more leeway. Now, as far as the percentages and numbers, I don't know how our CFO put it all together. But I know that we're pushing it out until we can finalize our budget for this year. They needed a little bit more time to get hard numbers from different areas.
Yeah, I'm curious too, because I noticed, and maybe you've got something directly from the Director of, of the Division of Local Government Services. But their local finance noticed back on March 24th, I did say that they were extending the deadline for, um, the budget from April 30th to May 30th, 2020. And I was just wondering if, if you've been told by someone else if, if that deadline has been extended for Belmar.
I only know what, what the CFO has been telling me that it's been extended and can't put a budget together yet until we have all the numbers in. So she said it needs, you needed a temporary resolution for temporary budget on this meeting. So that's all I could tell you. You, you're welcome to call in the Borough Hall.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Standby. Thank you, Jerry. All right. We have Bart coming up next. Standby. Bart. Unmute Bart. Standby. I have no idea why it doesn't unmute. All right. Bart, yes, see you there.
That has the connection here. This is Lisa Busco, Bart's husband, resident of Fifth Avenue, formerly Mr. Belmar Sunshine, I think, 1977. It's great to hear from all of you tonight. And especially, uh, talking points. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Especially Thomas and Ed. Were there all the time. And the point I wanted to make was about the crowd on Saturday. Yes, it was an unbelievably crazy amount of people. Definitely. Yes, it was unbelievably crazy amount of people, definitely.
That's what I'm trying to ask. Can we just have your name and your address, please?
Yes, Lisa Busco, 210th Avenue, Belmar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yes, as we were doing our run and we came back, we greeted a lot of people online. And Saturday was a little bit crazy, but then on Sunday, it was only a quarter of the amount of people.
Excuse me, you, we have the public comments at the end of the meeting, this is just for the resolution items right now. Not just the resolution, so you'll have a chance to talk at the end of the meeting.
Okay, great, I'll wait, thank you so much.
Thank you for that, I will, I'll put you up talking and then make sure you raise your hand again at the open session, thank you, stand by. Okay. And at this moment in time, I see no more hands. Thank you, Joe. April.
A motion.
You're not muted.
A motion to close the public session?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Unmute me, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Okay, Councilman Mon. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Next, we have second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2020 24. This is an ordinance amending chapter 19, section 16 regarding parking of certain trucks, vehicles and trailers being prohibited. This is open for a public hearing, if anyone from the public wants to comment on this ordinance, click the raise hand button. And when you're called on, please give your name and address.
Thank you, April, I see Katrina, stand by. Katrina, go ahead, please.
Thank you, hi, Katrina Clapses, 1304 B Street. Good evening, everyone. I would really like to thank you on behalf of the residents in my area, I'm on the community policing. I'm a block captain and this, this ordinance is very helpful for the people on my blocks. We've had issues with very large 18-wheeler trucks, I spoke about it at a couple of meetings prior to this. I just want to tell you that the town and the people in this area are very grateful for this ordinance. And you made a lot of people very happy tonight with this, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, stand by, lowering hand. Stable talking and looking for hands, stand by. Seeing no hands.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 24?
Make the motion. Second.
Okay, Councilman Mon? Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next we have first reading and introduction ordinance 2020 25. This is an ordinance amending chapter 19, section 12. This is for the deletion of a section that was incorrect. So this is just for first reading and introduction, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, Councilman Mon?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to public session, so anybody, I know we had two, so. Needs to speak to council, now's the time to do it. Okay, stand by, yes, I'm seeing some hands, we will get to you guys the best we can, stand by. All right. All right, we're gonna start for Linda Sharkis first, stand by Linda. We might have to do the phone thing again, Linda, are you there, stand by, unmuting. Still unmuting. Linda, are you there or on the phone? I'm gonna try the phone for Linda, hold on, please. And I have her number. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Ah, there we go, got you again, thank you so much for your patience, go right ahead.
Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue. I want to thank the mayor, the county council, Ed Kirshenbaum, Mike Campbell, the police force for making this happen. It'll be great having Memorial Day come, come this weekend and have a plan in place. And I wish all of us success in making this happen. And it's good we were able to have it come to fruition. And on behalf of the people in my neighborhood, I want to thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering for our, our public quad.
You're welcome, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Standby.
Okay.
Okay, now we have a Mark coming to, Mark, stand by. And unmuting. Occurring theme in our meetings is that unmute takes forever for some reason. Mark, are you there? Standby, please, we'll come back to you if we cannot get ahold of you. Okay, Mark, for some reason is not unmuting, so we'll come back to you, I will keep your hand raised and come back, stand by, please. L K O'Donnell, coming to you. And okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Lee Kelsey O'Donnell, 19th Avenue. First and foremost, I do want to appreciate.
Can I have your address, please?
19th Avenue. So.
House number, we just need it for our records.
I would prefer not to put that out there, since these messages are placed on YouTube, I would prefer that not to be public knowledge. I would be more than happy to email you with my house number individually if that is required.
All right, if you could do that for April, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, who would you like me to send it to?
April Claudia, yeah, April Claudia.
I appreciate that, thank you. As I was saying, I do appreciate each and every one of you taking the time, I certainly don't envy any of your jobs right now. And I'm sure that you're losing countless hours of sleep and times, time with your loved ones. And so I am trying to come at this not as a contradictory or as a. Trying to be the bearer of bad news, I guess you could say, but I do have a number of questions about the plan that is in place for Memorial Day weekend. And moving forward. Councilman Brennan, you particularly stated that it was not permissible to restrict ingress or egress at any beach point. Out and or to restrict any sales of beach badges. And I just wanted to know where you got that information from.
That's what we've been getting from the state. And honestly, that's under normal circumstances, that's basically how it is. Unless there's a regulation being violated, like somebody's having a fire on the beach or they're doing something that's in violation of regulations that we put in place. Then people are allowed to be on the beach. And it's under the circumstances we're in now, that, that really hasn't changed. I mean, we have to do what we can do to make the beach accessible to people. Now, we are allowed to restrict access to the beach in case it's too crowded, that's, that's new and that's specific to our circumstances with COVID. But again, I mean, if someone wants to buy a badge because they want to be able to come on, I mean, I don't know if anybody would. But it, you know, if we're talking theoretical, we could not say no, we, we would be breaking the law, basically.
And to counter your point, Councilman Brennan, I would ask if any of town and council then would have read. The executive order that was just signed by our governor on May 14th, which goes into effect on the 22nd. Which is the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, which does permit under section 3A1 and 3A2. The limiting the sale for the number of beach badges, whether they be seasonal or daily. And or limiting the access and ingress and egress points of the beach. And I, then my follow-up question to be is. Why is Belmar not implementing either one of those particular points of that executive order? Especially given that an executive order is not merely a suggestion, but it is a power that is given to us by the governor through the New Jersey Constitution as well as the statutes.
True. I guess that I don't, whatever other towns are doing. We put a plan in place that the governor approved of to, and, and the reason why we put that in there is we can limit it access when social distancing can't be controlled. So what the towns are doing, whether it's legal or not, but the governor has made it perfectly clear. Any non-residents, we cannot restrict from the beach. The only way we can restrict them is if we can't control social distancing and we have to close down zones of our beach. So we're in touch with the governor's office and he made it perfectly clear to us, we cannot restrict non-residents.
So then my follow-up question to that, Mr. Mayor, would be that Mr. Kirshenbaum, Administrator Kirshenbaum indicated that there is a task force in place with four different zones. And also he indicated that there, every single gate attendant would be given a digital tally counter to produce the on and off numbers of the individuals who are going on and off a particular access point. And my question would be, what is the number that these gate attendants have to reach? How is that going to be reported? What number is that based off of and where is that information going to?
You've got to understand one thing, we, we're in tough times. Members could all, they, if they're family members, they don't have to social distance. So it's going to be up to our emergency management, we're going to look at the counters, the counters will be really worked for. Off when we think the beach is going to be. Too crowded for social distancing, so we're.
So there's no direct number that you're going to reference to determine whether or not it's.
That'll be determined at very time when, when our Office of Emergency Management, the people that are running the drone for us. And it'll be done hour by hour to determine what beaches that we have to close and move people to another beach. That's what we're going to be doing, if we have to close off the south end of town because it's too crowded, but we have room at the First Avenue Beach, that's where it'll be directed.
And who is going to determine which families are we, which beachgoers are to be moved? And how are they getting from one end of town to the other?
Well, that's all in our plan, our special ones are going to tell them that you have to social distance or we're going to, or the governor's going to close our beach. So it's up to the people, they have to cooperate to keep our beaches open. Then if that's not working, we have other police officers to go down there.
And by way of.
We put in place, and we will see if it's going to work. Or we have to make adjustments to it.
So just yes or no then, so there is no direct number upon which you're relying to determine if a beach is too crowded? That counter for the gate attendance doesn't have any direct correlation necessarily, it's a fluctuating number.
I don't think it's been determined yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been determined yet.
We need to wait to see how crowded the beaches are going to be and then we'll decide that's a crowded number.
Okay.
I mean, is that, I mean, what are you, what are you looking for exactly, like, or, I mean.
I would be much more comforted if I knew that this plan was based on numbers and data that has been provided. And it's not necessarily a guesstimation. I do understand that this is a fluid situation and that it has changed countless times over the course of the past two months. But it seems as if every proposition that's being offered and every point of this plan is more of a reactive approach rather than a proactive approach. And to say that we are going to see what these numbers mean, to see if something is too crowded, to see how it goes, doesn't give me.
If you have a crystal ball, please give it to us, so we'll know. I mean, we're not going to know until this weekend and, and all it's going to be when the sun is shining over 70. We are proving that. The sun came out and it was trying to like hold back a tidal wave, people were coming. And that's when we made the decision to open up the boardwalk because we had to make that change that quick. Because I couldn't have all those people walking in the street with baby garages anymore. And emergency management and we all sat down and we said, this, this is what we're going to do, we're going to take the benches off. So it's going to be the same thing with the beach, until we get there on a hot sunny day, plans are going to be changing hourly.
I, I think characterizing this as reactive or proactive may be the wrong way to term it, maybe adaptive. You know, it's leaving us the ability to do what we need to do at the time that we need to do it. Because I think if we put a number in there, you know, where it's, it's going to be, it's going to be an estimate, I mean, we don't know. And so as, as those numbers become apparent, we'll, we'll update it to, to what it is, I don't.
I think, look, we all have a fair sense, which beaches are going to tend to be more crowded than others. That's probably not going to change from this year to last year to this year. What the clickers do, number one, no beach is going to be so crowded that we can't let more people go on, you know, before 11 or 12 o'clock. On a day, what they, what the counters will do will give us an idea of which beaches are filling up the fastest. So that, those are the ones we're going to have to watch a little more closely, it gives us a way to, to gauge where we need to really keep our eyes. And, and know, you know, if it starts to get close, we can say to people, you might want to go here, you might want to go there. Now, you know, your, your question about what happens to people, how do they move from one end of town to the other? I can tell you from working, you know, I've worked out at the beach, I've worked there seven summers in a row. People are always parking a mile away from where they end up for, for any number of reasons. They park where they can and they don't want to go on the beach whereby they, by where they park, so they go someplace else. I don't think, I think people will be very, very happy to know that they can get on the beach. And where they go is going to be safe. Well, one of the things we want to make sure is that people feel safe on our beach. And making sure that they have the right amount of distance is the major part of that.
This is a proactive plan, it's not a reactive, it changes every hour. It's not rocket scientists, we'll, we'll be able to tell when a beach gets crowded. We'll be able to move people when the beach is crowded, but the cooperation of our law enforcement and our Office of Emergency Management, well, we have a good handle on this. We have a team in place that's second to none in regards to experience levels of emergencies and handling, handling situations like this. We have people that have been around a long time that handle just these types of situations. Belmar has been known for crowds for years, so you, the professionals do their job and rely on their proactive approach of what we're taking. And I had this conversation with you the other day. So we're pretty secure what we have to do, it changes hour by hour and we have a team in place to be here from early morning to late at night to make sure the plan works.
And I do understand that we had a conversation last Friday, but also during that conversation, it was suggested that the executive order is more of a suggestion rather than what it is, which is the governor's orders and that they do need to be followed. And I'm looking at the executive order now and the requirements and the suggestions which are being put in place. And the governor uses shall language, which means that these suggestions are not to be taken lightly, that, that, that they are to be put in place. Whether it be one or a combination of all of them. And so far, looking at this list, it doesn't seem as if Belmar, quite frankly, is hitting many of these suggestions at all. Which is where my fear is coming from, especially knowing that, yes, every other year, Belmar is known for crowds. And that is a blessing and a curse. But at the same time, we're facing an unprecedented situation where crowds means illness at this point. And not only that, but we have other towns that are restricting their access per the governor's orders. And those people are going to be coming to Belmar because they know that they are. And those people are going to be coming to Belmar because they know that they are going to receive possibly unfettered access and there's not going to be a restriction possibly on badge sales. And so I also just want to point out, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that we are, we have hired fifteen less Class One or Class Two Special Officers for this summer than we have compared to last year. Is that correct?
No. We've hired them. The police academy shut down and they're not finished up, but they will be finished by July fourth weekend.
So we are starting Memorial Day weekend with fifteen less?
Well, the bars aren't open, so we're adjusting people.
So we are starting Memorial Day weekend with fifteen?
Yes, you're correct with that, but I just told you that the bars are all closed down. So we are taking the twenty people from the bars that we normally need and we're going to be directing them in different areas.
And so my final question would be, is what information are you using besides just this drone technology and the counters and what have you to make these decisions on a case-by-case basis? I'm specifically looking at what Mayor Walsfer indicated that Asbury Park and Belmar were on a council together. And just seeing the stark differences between what the Asbury Park restrictions are and what the Belmar restrictions are, I'm just wondering at what information Belmar is looking at that is different than what these other towns are looking at? Or what Belmar is basing this information and these provisions off of?
I don't understand your question, Ed. Do you understand that question? All I know is that each town is, is doing what they need to do. I will tell you, when Asbury was on this commission, committee, they were trying to force the governor into open up the restaurants and bars or they weren't going to open their beach. Well, they were, they were trying to force the governor to make that decision. Every call we had, they wanted to know more about the restaurants and bars than on the beach. But that's Asbury Park. We're Belmar and we're going to handle it.
My question then to rephrase, since you didn't seem to understand it the first time, is what data are you looking at?
We don't have data. This is brand new for us. We don't have the data. We're going to know it after Memorial Day weekend if the sun comes out.
Okay. So then you're going to be relying it then on this drone technology, the tally counting and I, the eyes of the task force?
We're going to have a team of people on the beach. I, I don't know how many times I'm going to say it. We've got to offer some residents, we're putting extra police officers on the beach. We're, we're putting out the volunteers. And we'll be, we'll be monitoring it hour by hour. I, I don't know how, it's not only drone technology of the counters. We have a task force, a police force, a police officers out in every zone. We have people on the, officers on the boardwalk. We have our volunteers that we're going to be working with. So it's, there, there's a lot of people that are going to be there and are making these decisions.
Okay. And I apologize, I did say it was my last question, I just have one more. Are the police force being issued masks that are being required to wear while they are on the boardwalk and on the beach?
They are all issued protective equipment. That's what I can tell you.
And is it going to be required by mayor, council and the police department of Belmar that they wear them when interacting with people on the boardwalk and on the beach?
She talking about police?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me, let me maybe clear you up a little bit about the police, okay? The police force will wear masks when they need to, social distancing is not achievable. But tactically, the police will not be wearing masks when they're out in the public. They operate differently than any other entity. They're tactical, they're, they have to rely on other senses. So to handicap them by having them wear masks, we're not going to do it. Okay, they're issued them, they know when to wear them. Police officers know how to handle their job. They've, they've combated problems from AIDS to being pricked with a hypodermic needle to being shot at or stabbed and other, and any, any threat that's out there for our police officers. So we're not going to handcuff our police officers or tactically trained, just like all our first responders are. They take the risk, they know what the risk is. At the end of the day, they will follow what procedures is put in place by their chief, but we're not going to handcuff them with, with wearing masks if there's no need to wear a mask. You know you don't have to wear a mask outside, okay? That's not mandated. You know that.
It was a question about when they're interacting with others, but I believe you answered it. Thank you.
Yeah, they will wear them when appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all? Okay, all right. Standby, thank you. And we have Sandra C., stand by please. And I'm muting hopefully. There we go, Sandra C. Here you go ahead, please.
Okay, Sandy Caputo, seventeen zero five Surf Avenue. First, thank you, Ed, for reading all of that information at the beginning of the meeting. And thank you to all of you for working so hard to get the beach plan ready for us. I, I can't imagine what that's like, getting all these things tied up. Mayor, you have said that there won't be any footballs this, this year on the beach. And you said it also.
It's in our plan, there's going to be no ball playing on the beach, no volleyball, no, no player of any kind.
No footballs, no frisbees, okay. I've been going to my Eighteenth Avenue Beach since the seventies. Lifeguards always stop the footballs and frisbees on the beach. They blew the whistle. This changed about fifteen years ago and then they began to lose control of this situation, but it was always the lifeguards. Now, when the lifeguard blows a whistle and points at someone who has something like a boogie board where they shouldn't have it, if that person doesn't understand, they walk over to the lifeguard stand and ask questions. And the lifeguard answers without getting down from the stand. Now, the two times that I've been able to convince a lifeguard to stop a football, I don't know why, they find it necessary, they have to get down from the stand, they go over to the people, they begin apologizing and explaining, I don't know why it works differently for a football than for a boogie board. And sometimes it's made to sound like I'm asking you to have the lifeguard sit backwards and watch the back of the beach. And of course, I'm not asking for that. The most dangerous footballs are flying around right in front of them, often right in the shower water. And I think people are hit with footballs on this beach. I think that guys running do knock people over in the chairs, they do knock people over. I have, it always was that the lifeguard blew the whistle for the football. I don't know now, I don't see that it's going to work having other personnel to do this. It always was, and now we're worried that, I know you've said the lifeguard has to watch the water. Of course they're watching the water, but the football is flying right in front of them. And it would make sense like it used to be that they stop the footballs.
Okay, I, I mean, all I could tell you is that we're going to have a lot of people on the beach and that, that's going to be one of the things we have to take care of because that, that'll hinder our, our social distancing.
I, I, I'm sorry that-
We're going to have a lot of people on the beach this weekend, so we're going to be watching the balls.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just asking you to think about what I said, the way it always was done, without putting people in danger, that the lifeguards always did it. And you know, I've talked about this before, I'm sorry that it took COVID to maybe stop the footballs, but maybe we can see this summer, that it's a good idea to not have these footballs flying. And if anyone was worried that if we stopped the footballs, that word would get around and guys would stop coming to our beach, I don't know if that-
You know, it's a hard thing to, to talk about the lifeguards because every day is different. Hot sunny day, we're going to have a lot of people in the water, they got to watch the water. But, you know, I understand. So we're going to do the best we can to try to stop all the ball throwing on the beach.
Okay, thank you. I, I have one more thing, a question for Mike Campbell. Mike, recycling is still closed.
Correct.
Okay. You're picking up greenery once a month now and all of us are doing gardening and it's piling up. Is there any chance of getting a second, like maybe every two weeks, a second day in the middle of the month picking up this greenery?
Right now, we're scheduled to pick up June first.
Okay, I know.
We always try and get out another time. Right now, with everything that's going on with the beach and everything else, I cannot schedule a day to pick up brush. So again, we are picking up June first. If we can get out again before that, we shall. But we ask everybody to leave their brush and their greenery, their shrubs, whatever they're putting out until the weekend before June first, so that the shrubs and everything are not placed in the gutters. And then if we have a rain or anything else that goes in our stormwater, and that goes back to what Tom Brennan was speaking of before. So again, we do pick up once a month. And we do, you know, it's on the first Monday. So again, that's the best I can tell you right now. Unfortunately, we have no scheduled days other than that one, you know, to pick up brush.
Okay. I understand. Normally, I would be at recycling when I'm gardening almost every day, dropping it off, which is what most of us do, so it's a little tough, but I am storing it in my garage and I will put it out at the proper time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. Thank you very much. Standby, everybody. All right. Scanning down the line. Cyrus, come in, Cyrus, stand by. I'm muted. Waiting for the slow internet. Standby, everybody on Zoom. Cyrus, come on, please.
All right.
Right, there we are, go ahead, sir.
Hey, how's it going, guys? Si from four hundred and fifth Ave, Belmar.
Hi, Si.
How you doing? You know, a couple of things. You know, I just listened to the, to the woman with the football issue and, you know, I think more people get injured by umbrellas flying around on the beach than they do by football. So, you know, maybe that ought to be the direction that she's looking at rather than footballs. But, you know, that wasn't the main reason for, you know, my, my, my reach out. You know, the couple of things that, you know, I have in terms of question is, one, you know, like two weeks ago, we did a mass closure of parking within town, you know, and closed off the streets to just residents. And then within a week or a two-week period of time, now we're opening up the town again. What was the cost associated with shutting down the town and putting all those? Again, you know, I'm a cost guy. You know, what was the cost associated with, you know, the barrels on Ocean Avenue, the barrels on, you know, the avenues? And then a week later, to make that decision to then say, okay, we don't have to do this anymore? I mean, the thought process-
We have a whole team making, making those decisions. But what we, what we first tried to do was block off parking, close down the boardwalk to try to deter people from coming into our town and, and telling them that the stay-at-home order is, is in effect. And they have to stay basically in their own, own neighborhood. What we found out the first, it was right after that, with the first week in May, when the two days were two beautiful days in May, it was like trying to stop the tide with everybody coming into town. And then our officers got inundated trying to control the parking. And I had nobody up on the, up on the Ocean Avenue trying to control all the people walking and riding their bikes in the street. So Officer of Emergency Management and the whole team said, listen, this is not working with closing and trying to keep people out of town. So we got to shift gears and move to more social distancing. So that's when we decided to take the benches off the boardwalk, open up the boardwalk, put the barrels down the middle of the boardwalk. So one group walks on the one side going, the other group walks on the other side going south. And, and then we opened up Ocean Avenue parking to say, well, we can't stop them on sunny days, so we'll mostly get them out of the neighborhoods and park up on Ocean Avenue. So it was an evolving thing that we did. You know, we tried to say, listen, we'll limit it to resident parking only. We'll, we'll do all these different things to say, you know, stay in your own neighborhoods. But Si, the minute that sun comes out, it's like me trying to hold back the ocean because they're coming. So that's, that's why we make the moves that we do and, and we're trying to work on this hour by hour. That Ocean Avenue, that weekend became such a public safety issue. We're surprised that, and God, God bless everybody, that nobody got hurt in, in Ocean Avenue by a car or run over because it was, it was that crazy.
Oh, I know. I rode, you know, you know me, I ride, ride the bike in the morning, you know? Oh, and I know how dangerous it was, which is, well, there's a, a couple of different questions I have. One is that, you know, you theoretically remove the benches from the boardwalk. Yet, you know, theoretically, what could, you know, a bench accommodate? Two people, three people? And you assume that those people know each other or they may be a family. Yet, you know, so you take them off the beach, but then you allow people to go on the beach. You know, that could be two, three, four people that are a family and sit together. I mean, you know, I mean, I happen to love going to the beach and Mark, I know you do too. You know, I know you like going to the beach. And even at nighttime, you know, to go and be able to, you know, have a cup of coffee and sit on the beach and sit the bench to take the benches away and then to take the bike racks away. I mean, to me, it seems like, you know, it just, you know, we're, we're going, instead of trying to, you know, get, you know, you know, things back to normal, we're getting things away from what's normal.
Well, I could tell you this with the benches, that, that nice weekend in May that we had, that I keep talking about, we found out that, like the younger adults that have been home from college since the colleges have closed down and, and the kids that are in high school that haven't seen their friends for a while, they were coming down and you, and there was a lot more people than two people on a bench. And they were all hanging out together and so that, that's why we made, and then what that was, what that was when the boardwalk was closed. So we said, you know what, we'll take the benches off so nobody can hang around. And, and, but I gotta say-
So the benches come, the benches come off the board, the benches come off the boardwalk, but then there could be twenty kids skateboarding down at the Seven Eleven, you know, on Eighth Avenue, you know, not social distancing, not having masks on. And, you know, and, and who suffers from that? You suffer from it, I suffer from it because I can't sit on a bench, but twenty kids could be hanging out at the Seven Eleven.
I get it, Si. I get it. This is all new for us and we're just trying, we're just trying to get everything together to try to keep people safe.
You know, the idea is that, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure whether or not the task force per se is, is focusing on what are some of the real issues. But on another, on another issue, what about the water meters for the boardwalk? Did we get the water meters on the boardwalk?
Yes, we did.
We did, okay. So, and they're on how many of the avenues?
I'm not sure. Mike, can you answer that?
Yeah, they're not on every avenue. They're on every bathroom and then they're on the avenues where we could get access from the street. So again, we can figure it out from there, but we did put them on as requested.
All right, so the idea is that we're going to do on the streets that don't have water meters, we're going to just do an estimation?
Yes, probably. We'll calculate how many, what the showers and stuff are using and then we'll, we'll make that estimation, that block.
Okay. The, just a question, you know, and, you know, listen, you know, I'm not trying to give anybody here a hard time, but I noticed that we have a couple of different, a couple of pieces of new equipment in town. I saw that we have a couple John Deere front loaders are, are they new?
Wow, I, I hope so, Sal, I hope, or Si, I hoped in my yard today. Because the loader we have is about eighteen years old. So if you're-
All right.
Mayor got me one, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, I saw a front loader going down to, a John Deere going down to the marina the other day. And then I heard through the grapevine that there was a second one that was on the beach. So are we borrowing that? Or, I mean, it's been in town. I mean, they've been in town. Oh, where are we getting them from?
I thought we had two of them for a couple of years now.
Then we, no, we lost one three years ago. We haven't had the opportunity to buy another one yet. We have a backhoe, which is also around 20 years old. We have a front loader and we have two tractors. The two tractors are used on the beach for raking and they're also used to move equipment when we need to. So again, if you're talking about yellow John Deeres, we have one and we have.
A green and yellow one that I saw.
Okay, the green and yellow ones are the beach tractors and we've had two there. And as far as I know, we didn't get any new this year, but again, if somebody wants to buy them, I will accept them.
Okay, uh, and uh, did we get a new roll-off container truck?
No, but again, I will accept it. Our roll-off is about nine years old. And again, I will take one if anybody wishes to buy one for Belmar. You can send it to belmardpw@dot com.
Okay, um, and let's see, what else? Uh, the other thing is that whatever happened with the uh, you know, with the um, the drainage uh, pipe down on um, you know, Lake Cuomo, did we ever get that uh, state aid? Or is that still a limbo?
We're still working on that, Si. We, in fact, there was a meeting today to get the new uh, flapper valve and the right one to go in. So uh, in fact, we had a meeting today and we're still working on the money.
Okay, so the flapper valve is in or not in?
Well, I could tell you this, it's manufactured and it's on its way to us.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, that's a good thing. You know, so we're making progress in that. Okay, um, let's see, uh, I missed, uh. Hey, when are you, when are you gonna help? Uh, and Mark, you can appreciate this because I see you every day, or I used to see you every day. Um, you know, when are we gonna get the bikes back on the boardwalk again?
I knew that was coming, Sal. I knew that was coming. I thought that would have been your first question. As soon, as soon as we have an opportunity to, we're, we'll, we'll get, you know, we'll, we'll get back to normal. We're gonna see how this weekend goes and then try to make the adjustments we need, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think.
You wanna ride your bike on that boardwalk?
You know, well, the thing is this, the thing is that two people walking next to each other versus, you know, uh, you know, being on a bicycle. I mean, you're a much greater distance apart on a bike than you are, you know, walking next to each other, holding hands. I mean, you know, so the idea is that.
I know, but everybody's going over for you.
What's that?
If we get all bikes on the boardwalk, everybody's gonna be jammed up. That's why we, we.
Well, you know, uh, you know, we're all a, uh, you know, spikers, we're all, you know, uh, you know, we're all respective people, you know, uh, you know, we know how to social distance.
Okay.
All right, guys, listen, um, you know, all in all, overall, you guys are, you know, doing a good job and, you know, uh you just need me to be the devil's advocate once in a while, that's all, you know?
Oh, we appreciate that, Si.
All right, have a great day.
You too.
I've seen his bike. He doesn't have brakes on it, right?
Oh, 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 whoa, whoa, whoa.
So do now, stand by. I waited for a little bit. Oh, he's still there. Still there, stand by. All right, we're gonna go to Sherry Russo, stand by. Sherry, go ahead, please.
Hi, Sherry Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Belmar.
Hi, Sherry.
Hi, as you know, I have a um, senior citizen neighbor I'm very close to. She is not um spectacular or any good with computers. So she asked me to ask you a couple of questions. One, the first question, sorry, and I'm just reading here. How can Nassau County in New York restrict their beaches to residents only?
I have no idea. We're not in New York.
Okay, uh, and the second question is, um on the website for the military and veterans to get on the beach. Um, I believe it was a little confusing. There's two different sentences that said two different things. And she's curious if it is just veterans that can get on the beach for free? Or is it veterans and their families or like, I looked it up myself. I didn't exactly understand, but I'm gonna write it down here for her.
I, I know Gold Star families can get on. I think it's just veterans themselves can get on.
And veterans only?
Yeah, I'd have to ask our, our beach director, but I'm pretty sure I remember that it's uh, Gold Star families can get on and.
Yeah, I remember seeing the Gold Star and I remember seeing the veterans, but I think like a few paragraphs down, there's a couple more lines. Sorry, I can't like do three things. Like I have heard questions on my phone and I'm obviously on the computer. But um, I don't know if somebody has a secondary computer in front of them or a secondary screen. Um, down the bottom, like there's some lines that say Gold Star families and veterans. And then if you go to the bottom of the page, there's a few more sentences that are different than those top sentences. Like it says something, I don't know if. You have that now, right? Great.
Mm-hmm. Active military members and dependents get on the beach. That's active military. That's been that way.
Active and dependent.
Gold Star family members. And all veterans. But it's, it's pretty clear that it's, it's veterans and non-veterans and their family members. The other two are make it clear that it includes family members. So one could surmise that because it doesn't say family members, it doesn't mean family members. It means just the veterans themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. disabling to talk and one moment, please. And we have a Mark, stand by for Mark. Hey, that went right away. Mark, go ahead, sir. Mark, are you there? I mean, that was the same mark from before. The, okay, stand by. Mark will, uh, we'll try to come back. Um uh, sorry for the technical difficulty, stand by. All right, and we have a Deborah we're hoping for, stand by. Just one second, Deborah, unmuting.
Yeah, click on that, comes up to the side.
Stand by. Gotta love technology.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now you've heard go. Please give a minute, we've comes on, it's taking a while. So give it a pause before we talk. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I, yes, this is Deborah from Inlet Terrace. How are you tonight?
Can I have your, your last name, Deborah?
Polly.
Okay, how are you? And you're, we're on Inlet Terrace?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I um, I just wanted to clarify because maybe I'm a little bit confused. I heard a previous caller had asked you about mitigating or limiting badges in parking in town. And what was the answer of why we could not do that?
Why we could not limit parking in town?
Limit parking or limit badges, badge entry to the beaches?
We will be limiting badges when, when the beach gets when, when we can't handle social distancing down on the beach, that will be, that we'll be shutting down daily beach badge sales. So we are limiting them.
Okay, but you don't have any plan on how you're going to do that. You're just going to say if it's too crowded on this beach for today, I'm.
No, we have a big plan on place. We, we have.
Let's repeat that because maybe I just didn't understand it. Because I see a lot of the other towns from Asbury all the way down to Point Pleasant and Seaside that are limiting badges. They're limiting their seasonal badges. They're limiting their daily badges. They actually have numbers that they're using. And it seems like we're one of the few towns that aren't doing that.
Okay.
Not doing that.
The 16th, 20th Avenue beaches get really jammed up. So if we limit badges, nobody be on first or second or third, but they'll all be jammed up down there. We still need our task force. We still need everything. No matter how many you want to limit, we still have to work on social distancing.
Yeah.
But after we get through this weekend, then we'll have better, a better idea of how we're gonna be controlling it. But we have a full plan in place with a full complement of officers and everybody that's gonna be working down there.
I understand that you're gonna be looking at it after the weekend is over. However, this weekend seems to be an issue. And it, it's from com, you know, this is not my, my area of expertise as it is yours. But I'm just looking at it from a common sense perspective. Many of the other.
Professionals that are in place that are working on this constantly, so.
I got it. I got it. Let me just finish, let me just finish my question. Um, you know, just looking at it from a common sense perspective. We have New York City beaches that are closed down. We have all the swimming clubs that are closed down in New Jersey. We have the other towns all around us, basic, especially right next to us, that have limited their badge sales and or limited their parking. All of those people, when they're coming down here, logical place to come would be Belmar since we're the only ones that have open floodgates to our town. So I understand we want to do it after this weekend, but this happens to be one of the busiest weekends of the summer. Why would we not want to do it proactively? That's my question.
Well, hopefully everybody's gonna comply with the stay at home order or not come here.
Would that be nice? But I think we're all under the assumption that we don't have to listen to what the governor says as far as the stay at home. Right? Cause we're on the news and everything else saying, come on down.
Yeah, that, I never said come on down, but.
Okay, well, we, we, the, the, um, what's out there right now on our website and everywhere else, any press that's been out is that Belmar beaches open. And we are the only ones, we are the only ones that do not have any mitigation in place. Now, I was under the impression that we were on conference calls with the other coastal towns and we were gonna be doing and I thought we were gonna be doing something in conjunction with each other. It seems like they're, we're doing, we're doing the exact opposite of what everybody else is doing.
Okay, thank you. That's your opinion.
That's not my opinion. That's a fact, sir.
We agree. We.
I mean, I have read up and researched every other town is doing, and we are the only ones that are not doing any kind of mitigation. That's a fact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's to say to that?
Well, that's because you, that's because there's no answer to that.
Well, because you, you want an answer that we're not gonna give you. So I, I don't know where to go with it.
What, the, the only answer that I want is something that makes sense. It's something that's gonna be, make sense and protect the people of Belmar and this area. And I don't see it happening. You said weeks ago, we had a sunny day and we were bombarded down here. Well, don't you think that's gonna happen this weekend as well?
We'll see how the weather goes and.
We can't depend on the weather. I mean, that's not a good. That's actually no plan, sir.
We are in a seashore resort town. For years and years, people came to our town. And now we're trying to hold them back and stop them from coming to our town. It's like holding back the ocean. So we have to adjust our plan. Now, if you think the other towns are better, I, I don't know. We're gonna see if the other towns are better. Because they, if they, the governor's made it clear, you deny one non-resident access to the beach, right? It's illegal, right?
I think that you're.
We've got into plenty of lawsuits over the years.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I am not saying to limit it to residents. I am saying that we are in the middle of a pandemic, a global pandemic, and we happen to be in a hotspot. Now, I know you know, you know all of this. And I see every other town around us putting mitigation efforts in place except for us. And I see that you said a couple of weeks ago, we were bombarded with people on our beach. And the reason for that was because there was nothing in place at that point. We didn't have any beach taker, you know, we weren't selling badges. The beaches weren't open. But now that the beaches are open and you're selling badges, you have every opportunity to limit, to limit it. It, back two weeks ago, you couldn't because it was basically open to everyone.
Well, we're not changing our plan to satisfy you. So thank you for your comment. We're not changing our plan.
Is it to accommodate me or to many other people in this town who are also concerned? I'm not the only one that's concerned. There are many other people in this town that are concerned as well.
Everyone.
I, I, I understand that your stance and that's unfortunate.
Okay.
I, I thank you for your time.
It's working for you.
Unfortunate for you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One moment, please. Okay, we have a, let's go, Colin, stand by. Who's waiting? I'm sorry.
I believe Byron had a question early on.
Oh, yes, yes. One moment, please, Colin. We're gonna put you back uh, off a moment. And uh who'd you say, Minister? I'm sorry.
Matt and Laura Powers.
Powers, yes. And here we go. Thank you so much. I got a lot back here. Hold on, please. That's right. She's coming back. Very good.
We need some good after that.
Matt and Laura Powers, go ahead, please.
So my name is Laura Powers. I'm at 104 Fifth Avenue in Belmar. I really just have um, just a few questions, uh, or clarifications really. Hmm, so uh, understanding that plans are, are fluid and that they will change, I would like a clarification, please, on the statement about uh, closing the beach if it gets too crowded. All I want to understand, I, I get closing the beach if it's too crowded. But all I want to understand is, does that mean removing the people who are already on the beach?
No, no.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's easy. That was just my one question there. Um, the other one is around um the top of the call when we were talking about misinformation going out on social media. And that we have an official Belmar, New Jersey page. I wonder if there would be any efforts made when we do recognize misinformation being published from a photographic point of view on other sites, will we take an opportunity to correct it on our site? To address it, I should say.
Yes, we have from the, yeah, the pictures last weekend.
Okay, and then my last question really is around, um, there was just a small mention of the food vendors on Ocean Avenue, for example, and having staff members be at the door encouraging social distancing. But I do know that down by Playables and you know, Jimmy's is right there and, you know, three restaurants in a row, and it does get pretty busy there. Has there been any conversation with those businesses about uh, providing some, some kind of online ordering and, you know, you just show up when your, when your number is called kind of thing? That's the way I know that Frederico's is doing it with their pizza.
Yeah, well, the beachfront businesses, you know, we've, our, our police department had to get in there and force the younger adults to social distance. That's the, that it looks like we're gonna have the big, our major problem is gonna be trying to make them social distance. So uh, we've informed all the restaurants that if they don't have employees out there forcing the, the social distancing, we will close them down. So.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if they have apps to order uh, online or, or over their phones. I, we don't know that. We're gonna be concentrating on the social distancing.
On the beach. Okay, I got you. I'm sorry, it's one more.
Will people with seasonal badges be given priority over daily batches as the beach reaches capacity?
Okay, so my, this is coming from my husband. The question was, um, is is the daily, excuse me, is the season badge holder is going to be given any kind of priority in terms of volume over dailies? No.
I, I don't, I don't think we can legally do that.
Yeah, okay.
But we're, we're gonna be, we, we have our beach zoned off. So we're just four different zones. We'll be moving people around. I don't think we'll have a problem with, with actually closing our beach.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stand by everybody. All right, we'll come back to Colin now, I think. See if that works. Colin, are you there, sir?
Actually, Harry McNally, Colin is my son.
Okay.
Um, I live at 506 Ninth Avenue. Um, just to follow up on the question that was just asked. In regards to social distancing and what's, what the plan is gonna be in place for when beaches become too crowded. How, well, first of all, whom and how, and how is it gonna be determined who was there first? Especially when people come to the beach and they don't pay attention to the tide board. And they go closest they can to the water, then the tide starts coming in and you keep creeping back and back and back and closer and closer and closer to. What's gonna happen? Am I expected to then, when I get to the beach in the morning, because I go in the morning, to take pictures of my surroundings to prove that I was there first? Like, how is it gonna be enforced?
No, it's not gonna be enforced that way. When, when people are on that beach, they'll be able to stay on that beach. We'll, we'll, there'll be a determination made by our Office of Emergency Management. And then we'll just allow access coming onto that beach any further and then we'll start moving people to another zone that has more. That has more room.
Yes, but my question is, how are you gonna determine who has to move? If I was there at nine o'clock and then people didn't pay attention to the ocean tides and they moved closer to me, how is it gonna be determined that I was there first? Should I take a picture on my cellphone to, to like show whoever's gonna enforce it that I was actually there first? Don't oh god me.
Hold on, I'm gonna let my business administrator answer your question.
The task force that we're talking about, they are assigned to those beaches. They will be there. They're going to be in motorized vehicles and on foot. They're going to know who was there, basically. Because they're going to pay, basically visit every blanket per se to make sure people are social distancing. So the people that are assigned will be on those sectors or those beaches. It's, it's like I said, it's, it's a continuous proactive approach to what we have to do. They're going to be on that beach. Uh, like I said, they're broken down into four sectors, so they're gonna be there. They're gonna know who's there. Uh, and listen, everybody's gotta communicate and everybody's gotta work together. So the police officers and emergency management, everybody will be on those certain beaches, responsible for those beaches.
Okay, and just to follow it up real quick, I mean, I, I really didn't appreciate the oh god comment when I was asking a question. Second.
The only reason why I did that, he was trying to unmute himself to talk to you, that's all.
Well, it seemed a little disrespectful, but anyway. In regards to the comments, please don't roll your eyes at me. I'm a resident here. My son goes to school here. I work in this town. I pay taxes in this town. I, I buy my badges. I'm a respectful citizen, so please don't give me an attitude. I'm here to ask questions. Second, in regards to the comment before about the no ball playing on the beach. Um, I think our children have like pretty much been suffering the most out of all this at the moment. What's gonna be next? Because I've been going to the beach in this town for 11 years. And I've been hit by a football or baseball not once. I've been impaled by an umbrella probably six times a summer. And what's gonna be after that? Can we not build sand castles because someone might trip and fall over the sand castle? Should we not dig a hole because someone might not look? I mean, I feel like some of these rules are becoming a little bit ridiculous. A little bit ridiculous, and then if there's no, and also in addition, if there's no place for us to park our bikes, that everyone else can park here. How are we going to get to the beach? We're residents here. We should be able to ride our bikes to the beach and, and, and put them in a bike rack.
There are, there are bike racks on the, on the boardwalk, but they were moved into the sections of the boardwalk that. Are, are the bump outs of the boardwalk. So the bikes are, are not blocking the social distancing, walking people on the beach. There are plenty of bike racks up there. So, but they're, they're moved from where you nor, you might normally park your bike. There might be a block away somewhere else, but. There are plenty of bike racks up there.
Well, thank you for that, but in regards to kids aren't allowed to play with any kind of ball on the beach or just not footballs?
Governor, that's part of the governor's executive order. No ball playing on the beach is, I, I believe it's not the executive order, yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't make that rule up. That came from the governor's office.
All right, well, thank you very much. Have a fabulous evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Stand by, everybody. Okay, I'm just gonna try to go into best order of how they are in my machine, and we have Alexis, stand by. Stand by. I'm sorry, Alexis says allowed to talk is unavailable because Alexis Finch is using an older version of Zoom. Need to promote Alex Finch to a panelist to talk, which you cannot do because that's for, um, staff and borough council. Um, so you can, um, call in or come back in, uh, another way. We'll try to get you. Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience. Stand by, please. You can upgrade your, um, if you go back in and it closes, it will upgrade you by itself just by clicking okay, so you can try that and come back in. And we'll, we'll find you, Alexis. Thank you. Stand by. Just please raise your hand again, Alexis, we can try again. All right, Karen, here we go. Stand by. All righty, all right, Karen, go ahead and say your name and info.
Hi, uh, Karen Gra, 116 Fourteenth Avenue. I basically just have comments. I think your boardwalk plan is great. It's flexible. It's, um, impressive is how you're addressing all the different situations. And just to, um, people that are concerned, I think we have to remember that some towns are limiting parking. Because everyone has a big yard with a driveway and parking in their own property. We don't. So we can't do that. The other thing, um, is that we all have to take personal responsibility. I was on the beach this weekend and I felt perfectly comfortable. And I've been hiding in my house, very paranoid about germs, and I felt perfectly comfortable on the beach. And the only way to do what some people are suggesting is if you had a mathematical grid of the beach. With inputs of every single person, and then you have the unknown quantity of how many people would be in a family group. So it's almost impossible to make a mathematical judgment. But anyways, I applaud, and I just wanted to give a positive, um, reaction. Thank you.
Thank you. We need that. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Stand by. All right, we have, uh, Jocelyn, I believe, stand by. And waiting for unmute. Uh, Jocelyn, are you there?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn Granny for Seventeenth Fifth Avenue.
Hi, Jocelyn.
Hi, Tom. Um, okay, so I just have a question about, um, regarding the businesses, especially on the beach, but it would be generally for the town. Um, I'm trying to figure out, um, who is responsible for monitoring and controlling, um, the patrons of each business. On Ocean Avenue, specifically because that's where the crowds have been recently. Um, if, if, you know, I'm a big supporter of, of the local businesses. And, and so I am actually concerned about them and how they're managing during this, this crisis. Um, if the business owner complies with all of the town's safety mandates. So I, I know that you've met with the business owners and that you have, um, given them recommendations and mandates, actually. Masks inside, for example, signage that they purchase. Um, perhaps they've put tape outside for the six-foot indications. Um, so after all that is done, and if it is a compliant owner. Who is responsible for controlling the crowds outside on the sidewalk? For example, um, you have, for example, like 7-Eleven, Playables, Coney Waffle. And I live in that area, and so I, I've witnessed myself. I, I, I drive there all the time. So I've seen what's, what, when there are crowds there and when there are not. Um, so sometimes on a busy weekend here in Belmar, um, there could be 50 people. Waiting for a slice of pizza, for an ice cream. Um, if there were, for example, 50 people outside of each of those businesses, or 25 even. Um, and then they are, um, supposed to be six feet apart. So if they're then in a line, there's, there's businesses in a line, and then you have 25 or 50 people outside of each business. Um, how would they be lining up? Would they be lining up down the sidewalks? And if so, um, who is responsible for monitoring those people outside to make sure that they are following the. Um, the regulations? Would that be, I mean, I, I would not, I would guess that the, um, small business owners wouldn't be able to peek down the sidewalks. So would that be the Belmar police?
Well, yeah, we see that they are not, and, and you're right about that one block because we have problems with that already. But they have to have employees outside to make sure everybody's social distancing. And we, we've already threatened one business that if they're, they're not controlling it on their own and our police department has to. We have the ability to shut down that business. Now, I, I don't want to do that because they are, they are having rough times, but. They have to cooperate with the Belmar Police Department and help us out so that their businesses don't get closed down. Our code enforcement have been down there discussing how we're gonna handle it this weekend. And, uh, that, that corner down there all week long, I mean, as long as it's not raining, they, they have a lot of people down there, so. We have worked out plans, uh, Office of Emergency Management, even our business administrators down there, been down there talking to them. About how to handle their social distancing with people online. So, and I said that, you know, our business administrator said, and our code enforcement said, we don't want to close you down because we noticed the times that we're in, but. You have to help us out and get some employees out there to make sure it's, it's being done.
So they should, to the business, so you're saying that the, the business owner is responsible for the people down the sidewalks? So, I mean, really, if there's 50 to six feet apart, you're talking 300 feet or, you know, so. The business owner needs to hire people to, um, to monitor the, the lines down the sidewalks. It would have to be down the sidewalks because there's not that much room there. So they should do that. Is that weird? I'm just trying to rea- I actually really want to understand this.
They're, they're working with us too, and they, they agree that, you know, for them to stay open, they gotta help us out too, so.
Now, when, when, so would the police, would there ever be police, um, assigned to those areas for that reason? For exa- I don't understand how DJs, for example, I know they always had police, perhaps they paid for them. I don't know. I don't understand that. But is that the kind of thing that we could put in place?
Well, we could, but, you know, there's a cost factor and everything, but, uh, you know, we're gonna have a lot of people down on the ocean. We're gonna, we're gonna really. Our, our police department will be, our code enforcement will be out this weekend. So, uh, and, and they know the problems that we've been facing on sunny, sunny days, so. They'll be working with business owners. Code enforcement will be down there than more than our police department.
Okay, so, okay, I just, I guess I'm questioning how the business owners are going to, to, to do that. And I, and you, you've answered that somewhat. Would they be able to, like, does DJs pay for the police with the business? Would a business owner be able to pay for that? Like, there's always police at DJs. I knew, I've noticed that.
All the bars pay. Police officers outside of any of the bars, they, they have to foot the bill for them.
The bars do.
If it gets to a, a point that we think a police officer has to be down there, yeah, then we're gonna talk to them that they gotta reimburse us for the businesses.
Oh, okay, so they'll be like each businesses line down the street, which it would be. If it's six feet apart and you have 50 people, it's easy. And there's businesses right lined up, so 50 at each business. That, I, I, I question how we can, how that, we can handle that, actually. But, um, if, you know, if you're gonna handle, I have another question, um. I, I actually agree with the person who called in earlier, um, regarding the fact that we're the only town. I know that you don't like to be compared to other towns, but we're talking about every town that, that I've looked at. Um, that would be Asbury, um, Bradley Beach, uh, Ocean Grove, Albon. Spring Lake, Seeger, Manasquan, Point Pleasant, Seaside Heights. They've all, they have all put in, um, mitigation. They've all made effort to limit the numbers of people who are coming this summer due to the global pandemic. And I, I understand, excuse me, Bob? Right, my husband, Bob, is also involved in this question. Um, and i- in some way or the other, some of them have, many of them have stopped seasonal sales of badges. Some have not, will not sell, uh, daily badges. Many have, um, limited parking up to 50%. Um, and I'm just curious, I don't think that the weather, when we're talking about being proactive. I, waiting for the weather and seeing what happens, that's reactive. And to, in my opinion. Wait a minute, wait, let me just finish. You said, it was just stated, I just read. That, um, last week and last Saturday, I think, we sold, um, two months of season badges in one day. And based on that information, when I heard that, I thought is, would, could that actually be enough then? During a global pandemic when we're really, we're really trying to, um. Not only flatten the curve, and this is not just for Belmar, this is for, um, you know, our, our, our county. And our state and, and our country. And so what I, I, I am concerned about that, and I just thought. That based on the fact that we've had such a great sale of season badges. Um, maybe, maybe we could consider, um, stopping, selling them at this point due to that pandemic. Excuse me?
Yeah, stop the sale of seasonal badges.
Well, you said that you sold two months worth, so that seems pretty good. Many other towns have done that. Again, I'm not saying we should copy every other town. But we are the only town that has not put in some, um, restrictions.
Like, saying the whole time, these, these plans are evolving, they're changing hour by hour. Parking, the, the changes that went in the Asbury Park, Asbury Park was gonna keep everything closed until the restaurants opened. Now they're open. So by the time we get to Friday, there's gonna be a lot of changes because the governor's made it clear to us. Somebody comes to town and wants to go on the beach. And was willing to buy a daily badge and you don't sell it to them, that is illegal. So whatever these other towns. We've been in enough lawsuits, so I'm not gonna, I'm not getting into another lawsuit because we won't let anybody on the beach.
So, so you're saying that it's illegal to stop, like, if tomorrow you decided to stop selling seasonal badges, that would be illegal?
No. Be illegal, but they could buy daily badges.
Well, you, you can monitor that as well.
Right.
Okay, so it's your choice.
Yes, and I think we have an excellent plan put in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, just going, going down my list. Angela, stand by. Unmuting. Okay, Angela, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead.
Uh, good evening. Um, couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry. It's Angela Pfeiffer, Fifth Avenue. Couple of questions. Uh, first, the new parking app that we have, which I think is great. I've used it in Asbury. Um, I remember when they made the presentation, I was at the council meeting and they brought up their fee. Is their fee in addition to what's being quoted on the website? So it's like a dollar an hour, I think, for us?
Their, their fee is on top of the dollar, yes.
Okay, so the fee is on top, so we're still netting our dollar?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and we also, um, talked at that meeting about possibly doing paid parking at the marina. Any progress on that?
We have it all put in place, but first we want to get the east side of Ocean Avenue, uh. All the bugs out of it before we start looking at anything else. But yes, we are moving forward on that.
Okay, so that's something that, that's something that we're thinking about. Okay. And then, I don't, I really don't want to beat a dead horse, but getting back to the, the crowd control. I just had a couple of thoughts. Mayor, you mentioned that, you know, one part of town typically gets more crowded than the other part, which is true. Let's face it, you know, 15, 16th to 20th, it's going to get more crowded. So, so just so that I understand how this would work. If somebody comes down to Belmar and they've circled around for a half hour looking for a parking space, expecting to stay somewhere on the south end of town. Now they come up to the boardwalk, they buy their daily badge. When are they told that that part of the beach is too crowded and they have to go someplace else?
When they come up to buy their daily badge, they'll, they'll instruct it to say, you can't get on the beach here, but we have room. At either Fifth or First or whatever, so if you, you would like to buy a daily badge still, that's where you would have to go.
So they could still buy the badge there and then walk down the boardwalk 10 blocks?
Well, yeah, to keep, to, to.
Won't it also be on social media?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah.
We're gonna be updating social media as things close.
Okay, so what happens if that person has a locker on 16th? And they need to get their stuff? And they've paid for that locker? Gonna let them on to get their stuff and?
Yeah, we probably will.
And then, it, it just kind of seems like, realistically, are they gonna walk down? They can walk down the boardwalk, walk on the beach and walk back up if they want to.
Well, they're gonna have to because, like, the governor's made it clear to us, if we can't handle it, he'll close the beaches. Well, they're gonna have to because, like, the governor's made it clear to us, if we can't handle it, he'll close the beaches. So I don't want to come into July Fourth weekend and we have to close down our beaches, so we're gonna have to be really strict on it.
Yeah, no, I I get, I I I'm just thinking, trying to trying to 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 implement it. I mean, I I think we're gonna have a lot of frustrated people who drove down here, fought the traffic, tried to find a parking space, found a parking space, went on the south end of town or the north end of town, whatever, to be with their friends. And now we're telling telling them they have to go another ten blocks.
They could wait there and wait for people to come off the beach that are leaving the beach that day, and then they'll be able to go back on that same beach. They'll have the option. If you you wanna, don't want to go to the other beaches, you could wait until people come off.
Yeah, I I I'm just, I I think we really, and I get that you folks have put a lot of time and effort into this, and I'm sure your heads are ready to explode. But I think we really need to stay open to the possibility on that we need to limit beach badge sales, just as the other towns have, not restricted just to residents, I get that. But limit the number of either seasonal badges or daily badges. If the other towns are doing it and it's across the board, I I don't think that's singling out non-residents. So it's just something to, you know, to 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 keep in mind, and I just hope that we're open to it. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're done a list. Standby. Standby. There's about seven more people on the thing here, Mayor. Standby. And Kelly coming in. Standby, Kelly Lang. Kelly Lang, are you there?
Uh, yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Lang, three oh one nineteenth Avenue. Happy birthday, councilwoman.
Thank you, Kelly.
Um, first, I just want to start out by thanking all of you for all your work and all your planning. And I just kind of wanted to mix it up a little bit and take it in a different direction. Um, my question was about the group rentals coming in for the summer. And um, so I'm assuming it's gonna be really hard to enforce social distancing with that, um, especially with the bars being closed this summer. I guess I kind of have visions in my head of the eighties again, and I'm just wondering, are the same rules applying? Um, how, how are we gonna handle the overcrowding, the parties? I know right now after ten, there's noise ordinances. But um, what's the plan for that, for for dealing with the influx of those kids?
I'm gonna let our business administrator let you know what the plan is gonna be. All I know is that we're fully aware the bars are gonna be closed. They have rentals that have been paid for and have contracts. So we've been trying to really work it out, but the police department's putting a plan in just for that also, but I'll let our business administrator explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Kelly. Starting with early on, code enforcement has talked to all the realtors and all the owners that are renting houses. They know that certificate of occupancy is gonna be thoroughly followed if it's, they've made a list of every rental property in Belmar. It's been given to the police department. I met with Chief Scott. She has, and and if you're talking about the eighties again, if you'll remember that we had what was known as a noise car, uh, special unit going out there just for group rentals. She has a team in place. We have to switch from the daytime social distancing policing with the beach and the boardwalk and then flip over because the bars are closed and people will be partying at their houses or or think they are. We're gonna switch to a proactive approach. Every uh, police officer will have a list of every rental in town, how many bedrooms and what's on their certificate of occupancy. Uh, everybody's been informed that are renting those houses that there'll be a zero tolerance factor because of what's going on in town. And they have special units assigned just for um the group rentals. As the mayor said before, the the cops that we would normally have paid for by the bars to take care of those problems are going to be reassigned to handle the residential areas to make sure that the certificate of occupancy is being followed and all the rules are being followed. So there is a plan in place where we have to switch to handling the rental problems. And the chief has assured me that she has a team in place to handle all the problems that they're gonna come up with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just one more question. Um, I know you guys need all the help you can get. And during Sandy, we were also in a state of emergency. We had um some state troopers here. We had the National Guard here. Is there any possibility of us getting some outside assistance to help you guys out?
The National, we won't have the National Guard here. But we have mutual aid policies in place with all our surrounding jurisdictions, as well as, I've been in touch with Sheriff Sean Golden, if we need the sheriff's department or the state police in the area. So we have mutual aid plans in place. Chief Scott is taking care of all that. Uh, it's, this is not new to the police department with the crowds, so all the plans are in place. It's not rocket scientists. They, Belmar's a tourist town for a long time, so yes, our plans are ready to go for mutual aid if need be, and to help us handle the crowds.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Standby, everybody. All right, we're gonna go for um Cyrus Genshin, give it a whirl. See, we go, standby. Okay, Cyrus, are you there?
I'm here.
All righty, go ahead, sir.
Just when you thought you guys were done with me. Um, I just wanted to say this, that, you know, I've been watching this all night. And, you know, as, you know, you know that, you know, I go to most of the council meetings. Um, but the thing is that what I have to say is that I think that overall tonight, you guys have done an exceptional job with respect to, you know, a lot of the alarming questions regarding, you know, the COVID. You know, it is what it is, you know, we gotta live with it. You know, sixty-five thousand people die a year from the common flu. You know, you know, the results are that, you know, we may be experiencing eighty thousand with the virus. You know, you do what you have to do, and I think that the citizens of Belmar really need to understand that you're trying to do whatever you can to protect them. You know, but, you know, it sometimes it just gets out of control. And I think the way that you've responded to a lot of these concerns um was very patient and recognizing the fact that, you know, being, you know, public officials, you know, that you have to have some respect for them. But, you know, the idea is that they too have to have respect for you in terms of what you guys gotta do. You know, so with that being said, the only other thing that I want to talk to you about tonight is that what is the ordinance in town with respect to commercial vehicles, parking in public parking lots?
I I know we just changed the ordinance for that, that they can't be there overnight. The ordinance we put in.
They are, they are.
Yeah.
I mean, I see it all the time. Go to Belmar Plaza. I mean, you know, I mean, hey, listen, I have nothing about, you know, nothing bad to say about, you know, a Jake's, you know, Crab Shack, but, you know, it's trucks out there, you know, twenty-four seven. You know, you go down to the new municipal lot and they're out there. And, you know, and the reason why this is an issue for me is because, you know, maybe some of you know, you know, that I had, you know, an RV in my driveway and I was on my property and I couldn't even have that there, yet somebody who owns a commercial vehicle, you know, has it in their parking lot. And I don't understand, you know, the, you know, the rationale there, you know. So maybe on a side note, we can talk about it at some point.
Yeah, well, I'll ask the police department if the.
I mean, if 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 you look at, if you look at the lot that, you know, the new municipal lot that across from Belmar Storage. I mean, there's companies in there that have vans in there that are from Bricktown. You know, uh, it's just a place where they're a dumpster truck. I mean, you know, you can go into the Belmar Plaza and you see people there. Now, you know, you restrict the resident from having something parked in their driveway, which is on their property, yet, you know, they get the ability to park a vehicle on theirs. But, you know, that's a side note. The big thing I want to say is that I think you guys are doing a great job, you know, with respect to the virus. And I think that people are being over paranoid about the situation. And I have full confidence that you guys will do, you know, the right thing down the road. You know, um, just hang in there, guys. You know, you caught a lot of grief tonight. It's been a long meeting. You know, but, you know, I, as one citizen of Belmar, respect the fact that you dealt with it the way that you did.
It's like, you know what, these guys can tell you, nobody's more paranoid than me. I'm comfortable with this plan, uh, uh, then it should be okay. I think it's flexible. I think we are ready to to adapt it as needed. Even, I've even heard more tonight that makes me feel more comfortable. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Si. All right, Alexis Finch, standby. See if we can get you here again. Nope, still the old version. You gotta update. Um, you try calling in, but um you have to update your program just to work. So sorry, we'll put your hand down and try next meeting to get this. You can contact me if you need help. Um, feel free. Standby. Linda Sharkus coming to you. Mark, we're gonna get to you super soon, buddy. Thank you for starting the place. I see my. Linda Sharkus, are you there?
I think you have to call her, John.
Oh, yeah, you're correct. I'm sorry, Mary. Yep, she's in the actual phone number. I'm sorry, let me do that again. You're absolutely right. Thank you. Let's see, I wrote it down. Sorry, there's a couple similar numbers here. There we go. Okay, I got a little, sorry, three hours. I'm, here we go. There she is. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Linda Sharkus, Fourth Avenue. I want to follow up on Kelly's line of thinking. Now that the restaurants and bars are able to sell mixed drinks in containers, what regulations are in place to control drinking on the streets? Or do you, you know, where are they supposed to drink these concoctions that are being touted around town? And um, what are we gonna do about the litter if they're allowed to drink on the street? And where are they gonna put their their garbage when they're finished drinking, eating as they're walking home or whatever?
Well, first of all.
I'm not sure I'm clear.
In town. So we do have the ordinance. It is gonna, it is gonna put some pressure on our police department. When I saw that uh, that get voted in, I said, it's definitely gonna put pressure on our police department. Because I, I I don't think that that was thought out very well, but we, it's there. We gotta deal with it. Uh, I'm sure it's gonna cause us a, cause our police department a lot more problems, but um we're, we're trying to figure out what, how we're gonna handle all that because it's supposed to be in a sealed container and they're probably just putting a lid on it. Like you said, they'll be walking down the street or taking it on the beach, and, you know, that's just gonna cause us more headaches.
Right, and so we've created more garbage. So um, I know there were a lot of people drinking outside of the restaurant from which they purchased the alcohol. I think we should come up with a plan and make that plan public, so there'll be no confusion.
If anybody sees that, uh, we gotta call the police department right away. This way we could.
It's, anybody who was out, out over the weekend probably saw people drinking on the streets. So, you know, I I would hope we don't have to do that and you address it. You know, if it's more localized, yes, I get it, but it was actually outside the restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll leave it to you to figure out what restaurant it was.
I can imagine.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes.
I have a question regarding what Linda just said. Um, I was thinking about, I know the governor passes. But do we have any right to kind of rescind it in our town and not allow it?
The only, the only thing is, is most of, most of these are regulated by the state. We'll have to take a look at it. Jerry, you'll have to take a look at that. See if we can put an ordinance. I mean, we already have the ordinance.
You can't drink in public.
You can't, yeah.
We already have that, so I don't know what else we could do.
And you can't litter, um, but if people do that, then you gotta do what you gotta do.
Derek, can you, can, can we as a town stop, stop this from happening here? I mean, really, I think it's gonna create a bigger problem than you can imagine.
Well, as the mayor said, it may not have been thought out real well. You can't overrule the executive order.
Okay.
Um, what you can do is try to enforce your own ordinances in terms of drinking while you're walking down the sidewalk and no littering. And it's gonna have our part of police department, these guys are gonna be all over town trying to take care of all this, but here we are.
Thank you.
Okay, standby. Uh, right, Mark, standby. I mean, from Mark Fitzgerald, standby, unmuting. Standby. Having trouble with this unmute setting today. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I am.
There you go. All right.
Great. Thanks, that, thank you, everyone. I I want to just um.
Mark, just give us your name and address.
Yeah, I, yeah, I should know that, right? Mark Fitzgerald, Surf Avenue. Uh, I I just want to thank you all for the time and effort that was going into this. I think sometimes people might forget that the people who volunteer for the various positions in town or run for positions in town, um, they're our friends and neighbors, just like, just like all of us are, family members, friends and neighbors. And uh, I think the council people, I call them low-paid volunteers that are spending way more time on doing the job than they ever imagined. I think if you guys figured out what your hourly rate is, you're probably not making minimum wage doing this. So people say, we pay your salary. Um, it's not much of a salary that's getting paid there, but the job is almost full-time. What we have going on right now is it's a challenge of all of our lifetimes, and I think sometimes we're forgetting that, that, that um you know, we're all trying to figure this out, and we all need to work together as a community to 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 make this work. It's, there's no magic here. This is uncharted territory for everyone. And so, you know, some of the common sense things, if it's too crowded, stay away. Don't go into a crowded bar. Don't go, don't go onto a crowded boardwalk. The people who do are are putting themselves and their, their loved ones at risk, but that, but you don't need to. Uh, common sense, stay calm, have patience. You know, those are all the things that everyone needs to put into place and 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 don't seek the council members or the police as lightning rods for, you know, the frustration and anger that everybody's feeling. And unfortunately, you know, you guys have to field all that, but, you know, you you have the same concerns we do. Mark, I know your mom passed away. I I I didn't get a chance to say condolences to that.
No, thank you.
But, uh, you know, just thank you all for 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 signing up for this, doing your best. And just remember, no good deed goes unpunished.
All righty. All right, I'm trying to see if we can get um some new, but uh go, Colleen, standby. Oh, we got Mike, Mike, you wanna go? Standby. Uh, getting you set. Or I, we are having issues with this unmuting thing here. Mike, are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep, Mark, if it's okay, just want to bring up one thing about the beach. Today, we had, we're putting out the schedules for our beach, um, people that were working in our lavatories. And we started out with twenty-nine confirmed, which would have been enough for us to start and getting everything going. We had fourteen people back out today concerned about Corona, so that's pretty much half our staff. So I did speak with Mr. Kirschenbaum about that, whether we're gonna limit bathrooms or anything like that for the weekend. We are trying to get it, but what I wanted to bring out real, right now, if people know of anybody out of work or anything else, we are looking for badge checkers, uh, because some of the people. uh, because some of the people aren't coming back because they weren't comfortable. And we are looking for lavatory attendants. So, again, if anybody wants to, uh, reach out to any neighbors or anybody they hear, if they're looking for anything, even part-time, just until things get better, um, we would appreciate it. We are looking for people, uh, desperately for the badge checkers and for the, um, lavatories. So, again, I just wanted to say that real quick. I'm down to about eight percent from a hundred. So, before I got canceled out, I just wanted to ask if anybody knew anybody, please have them contact, uh, Borough Hall or DPW. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right, standby, everybody. Uh, we got Alexis. We'll try her again. She's been waiting very patiently. Uh, so let's try her again, please. Standby, everybody. Allowing to talk. I think we got it. Alexis, you there? Hey, put your volume up. We got you.
All right, well, that's as far as the volume goes on here.
All right. You're good. Yeah, just talking a little closer. Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, so first of all, happy birthday to Councilwoman Wong. Um, I know it's hard going through this. I had my birthday and my mother had my birthday during, um, during COVID. So, I hope you were able to celebrate a little bit, uh, and folks were able to find a way to wish you happy birthday.
Alexis, just, uh, just, can you give us your name and address for our records?
Oh, certainly. My name is Alexis Finch and I live on Eighteenth Avenue in Belmar.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and, uh, Mayor Walser, I wanted to bring up actually the issue that you're continuing to say that you're holding back the ocean or trying to. And I'd like to remind you of the existence of Amsterdam, uh, who has managed to hold back the ocean for many, many years through planning and engineering. So, I hope that as Mayor of Belmar, you plan to use us that and help us hold back this ocean. So, either switch to a different metaphor or let's do what Amsterdam does. Um, I'd like to also bring up the difference between permitting access to the beach as we are required to and advertising of the beach being open. Having heard from people all from, uh, from all across the country, as well as from England, uh, friends of mine, who independently saw footage and coverage of the beach in Belmar being open and knew that I lived here, I'm distressed that we have received so much recognition for maintaining the, uh, open arms to everyone. While on one hand it's commendable and is certainly required, I think perhaps a little more emphasis on, uh, the safety and health of our residents and following as Pennsylvania has and New York has with urging people again to please stay home. If they for some reason for their mental health have to come here, need to escape to somewhere, then certainly we should welcome them. But reminding them of the fact that there is still a state of emergency and that there is still a stay-at-home order. Not that it's a law, but it is still an order. Does anyone have a comment on that?
Well, we haven't been advertising our beaches open, but the paper, all the media has.
I was, uh, well, I was at the press conference there for the Monmouth County. I'm sure you recognize my name again. Um, we were there as the plague doctors in order to try and grab some attention away from the constant uh, drumbeat of Belmar's beaches open, the Jersey Shore, the beaches are not closed. So, that's, uh, if even with that, the press is picking up that, hey, we're open and they have some thoughts about it, then maybe the optics need to be adjusted a little bit. Uh, but I don't want to harp on that. I wanted to also thank, um, uh, Councilwoman Kirschenbaum. I want to thank you for specifically running through the protection that our lifeguards are going to be receiving. I thank you very much for going through and specifically addressing that. That was a huge concern for me. Um, as an avid swimmer for all of my life, my father is an avid swimmer, grew up on the Atlantic. And I know how scary riptides can be and especially people coming in from out of town, they don't know how to handle that. So, making sure that our lifeguards can still rescue those that don't know what the hell they're doing in the water, um, but not put themselves at risk. I really appreciate that. Um, I also want to say a big thanks to, um, the Facebook that you've got a header up there to let people know that social distancing is being expected. I also want to say thank you for getting the motion detection, uh, set up. The less things that people have to touch, the better. Uh, currency counters, the Plexi, uh, that are gonna be protecting our ticketing agents. Uh, all of this is wonderful and I really want to appreciate the, um, the work that you've all done. I have, go, go redhead, you should, you should glow for a little, little bit there because this, it, you've done an amazing job with that. Um, I do want to say that there's some ideas that we've been bouncing around. Uh, I'm not a naysayer. I'm actually a user experience researcher and work on strategic planning, both for tech companies, as well as, for instance, the Judicial Council of California. I work for them. And so have been looking at this from an experience design standpoint, which is a course that I've taught for a number of years. And trying to figure out ways that we can help people follow the rules and regulations that you're laying down. I understand obviously there's the huge issue of a budget that you're encountering and all of this has to be done within budget. But trying to think of things that could perhaps be done even maybe by, um, a citizen. Uh, an item that was brought up was, uh, striping the boardwalks. And this was something that I bring to the table from my experience working in Chicago, uh, with the Act of Transportation Alliance and setting in bike lanes. If there is some way to stripe out lane lines, Mayor Walser, you mentioned the problem that we had of the lines sort of drifting into the boardwalk, uh, over last weekend. Is there a way or a budget or, um, something that could be done in order to lay out sort of, you know, the double yellow line that people have to stay beside, behind while they're waiting in line for tickets or bathrooms?
Yeah, we have spots for that. Our DPW director, Mike Kim, will be having them all in place before this weekend.
So, that's the, you're gonna be striping the boardwalk, striping those lines out?
Well, I, I don't know exactly how he's gonna be handling it, but we gotta, we gotta put the, the six-foot separation. And we're gonna either put the six-foot separation, either X's or however he, uh, or DPW, do it. But we have to, we have to do it for all our bathrooms, all our badge takers, uh, all the badge booths. So, that'll all be done before this weekend comes.
Mayor, if I may, we're, we are putting out the distancing spots we purchased. Um, pre-made spots that tell people what the distancing spots will be. They'll be out in the bathrooms, the ticket booths. We also did buy the bars. If you know, if you go into Avon, the traffic bars that they have, so people can enter into the street. Uh, we bought some of those. Um, so we can also try and keep people from drifting out into the walking area, but I have no plan to stripe the boardwalk at this point.
Oh, okay.
A, a cheap and easy suggestion, well, maybe not 100%, 100% cheap. Um, but using, for instance, the stripe paint that's used on soccer and, uh, baseball fields, which does actually wash off after a while. It's a stronger chalk. You could possibly have someone do the walk down and do the line, um, using one of those, just striping out a lane. So, people know how to stay inside that lane. Uh, similarly, we were wondering if maybe it might be possible to set out, um, six-foot lines just going all the way down the boardwalk. So, people understand, okay, this is the distance I need to keep so I don't creep up on the person behind me. Yeah? Sorry, I, I just heard someone commenting. Was that Patricia?
I thought you.
How are you, Alexis?
Okay, okay. I just didn't want to interrupt if you had a comment. Um, it, that's something that maybe was an option. I wanted to ask about the zones. And this was something that I think was being brought up a little bit before. How are the zones going to be handled where people enter from one zone, but then wander into another one? Or are they being asked to stay within the zone they entered in? I imagine this is.
They can go, they can go from zone to zone as long as there's room.
Okay, as long as there's room. Uh, and then a, an item with that, we ran some quick calculations just running down. It's about 1.3 miles of beachfront that Belmar has. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's about, mm, on average, and I'm not sure if this is high tide or low tide, but about 150 feet, uh, depth of beach. So, from water's edge up to the boardwalk. Um, we ran through some numbers just trying to figure out if there's a way to maybe grid off the beach. I know this is something that they've been doing in Domino Park in Brooklyn, uh, to great fanfare, actually, of the press, as well as to great success, making sure that people could enjoy some outdoor time. Um, and I know also having visited beaches in Europe, that this is something they do there, where they actually give you a grid space, uh, when you enter the beach. Is that something that you've considered as an option?
No. It would, it would be a little difficult for us to do that, but, uh, we were looking at all different options.
Okay, all right. Um, I guess the, the other clarification I wanted to know, looking at Spring Lake's rules and regulations that they issued, uh, you did say that masks would be required when entering bathrooms and when dealing with bathroom attendant. Uh, are those gonna be required while people are standing in line as well as with Spring Lake or people not required?
Ken, unfortunately, it's not required, but we're, we're gonna try to request that they do.
So, strongly suggested. Okay, um, I did want to ask, so with the Facebook site, we've got that great, uh, header that's up there and really appreciate that. Again, it's, uh, uh, some good real estate to be putting the information out there. Uh, wondered if there is a plan on the main Belmar website. Right now, there's a very small section that's actually on the COVID and the rest of it is the boxes. Uh, have you considered doing a splash page or, um, uh, or something like that in order to have these, you know, updated rules and information on there that can be easily and nimbly adjusted at, at all times?
Our social media, uh, staff will handle all updates on all forms of social media.
So, they'll be taking care of, uh, that through HubSpot or is it a different platform?
I don't know the platform, but I know that they're gonna handle what they have to handle.
So, that's, uh, that's a splash page that's on the website I was asking about, not social media. So, website usually would.
Website, any platform that we have to get the message out with, uh, that's what the multimedia director will handle.
There's a landing, there's a COVID landing page.
Okay, there's the COVID landing page, but that's at the very top. It's sort of a, a separate link that you have to click. What I was asking about was, I mean, I'd never be one to suggest having a pop-up window because we all hate those and had to deal with them for many years. Um, but instead there's the option of using, for instance, uh, I believe it's actually called splash.com. Uh, there's Instapages, another one, which is essentially layering another page above the website where you don't have to change any of the code of the website, but instead can nimbly and easily change the code of that splash page. So, uh, Mayor Walser, where you're reminding us that this is a changing situation, rather than having someone go in and change all of the information on the main site, maybe this would be an opportunity to, uh, ensure everyone who comes to belmar.com sees these recommendations, regulations, et cetera.
Well, you know, we will discuss that. You know, I'm not, I'm not that tech savvy, but we'll, we'll discuss.
I, I can understand that.
Director.
Who is the, the media director, just so I can check in with him? I'm happy to give him a call tomorrow.
John Sabia.
If I may, Mary, you can reach me at jsabia@gmail.com. I'm sorry, at belmar.com. S-A-B-I-A, S-A-B-I-A at belmar.com. And I'd be happy to, uh, run through some things and, and, uh, whatever questions you have to ask.
Yeah, I don't know that our CMS has that capability, but.
Okay, usually it's a, it's a quick overlay. I don't want to take up too many other.
Thank you.
All good. I'll give you, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow. Um, I think that's about it. The main concern that I have is just really, again, well, yeah, you know, as, as it was quoted to me recently, Mike Tyson says, you know, all the plans go out the door when you get the first punch in the face. Still making sure that we really do have solid plans and secondary plans in place is something I'm hoping to be reassured of.
We have redundancy. We have the staff that's been around a long time that's handled all kinds of emergencies. So, we have very, very.
Okay, Ed, you, you're simultaneously saying that people have handled all kinds of emergencies while saying this is something you've never experienced and no one's experienced.
Nor have you.
I apologize.
Nor have you.
That's true. I was not alive in 1918.
Nor was I.
So, let's, let's be happy about that because we look pretty funny at this point. But I do want to just remind you that trying to say that people have handled this before and that no one's handled anything like this at the same time is a little bit disconcerting for residents. I'm sure you can understand that.
We understand.
Okay, is there some way that you can sort of, uh, better let us know what the, the, the next phase would be? Or if Saturday goes horribly wrong and, you know, as, uh, Mayor Walser is concerned about, we have every single coed in the tri-state area lands on our doorstep, as well as all of the graduates who, you know, just missed out on the graduation ceremony. How do we deal with Sunday and how do we deal with Monday?
You take it hour by hour, day by day. You roll with the punches. You adapt to the plan. We, we have, we have everything covered. Like you said, this is not, uh, there's no playbook. We have to, uh, adapt to any situation that comes our way. Crisis management is the same in any type of situation.
Yes, I have, I have a degree in PR and crisis management.
Sorry, Matt, finish?
So, yeah.
Finish?
Go right ahead.
Crisis management is the same concept in most, all emergencies. So, at the end of the day, you handle each situation as it comes and we're pretty confident what we have to do and we appreciate.
And I'll remind you actually that the number one item in crisis management from a PR perspective is to make sure that you communicate immediately.
No question about it.
All those who are in question, questioning it. So, I want to be sure we'll be seeing something, updated information on the website, updated information on social media, because this so far has been very disconcerting for a lot of folks. I'm not the only one. I may have dressed up a little bit more fancy to let my, uh, people know my thoughts and feelings, but I'm not the only one that's worried.
Yes, well, we'll have plans in place and we'll also utilize Code Red or Code Blue if you need be.
Fantastic. All right. Well, I wish you all the best of luck in handling this. I'm sure you haven't been getting much sleep at this point. So, get a good night's sleep and, uh, best of luck on Saturday. Cheers.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alexis. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Alexis. Standby. All right, Colleen, standby. And unmuting. Colleen, are you there? Colleen, are you there? No, hold on. Colleen. I'm sorry, but just so you're aware that when I do hit unmute, it does not unmute. And then when it says that it is muted, it is not muted. So, uh, this is a little backwards, um, COVID tech. Okay, standby, please. Going to the next, uh, participant. Gerald?
Yeah, some here.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, my comment about the, the beach and all the preparations that you guys are working on. I think, you know, you're doing a lot of work and it's probably all, you know, great stuff. But what I don't hear, which I think would make your life a lot easier, is someone, and it starts from the governor down, telling people that they should not be going to the beaches. Okay, even though the governor says the beaches are open, it is not advisable for people to go to the beach. It was in the NJ.com, the, um, Health Commissioner of Philadelphia headline, do not go to the Jersey Shore. Okay, because there are crowds, you're at risk. Um, no matter how good you guys do your job and try to protect people, there will be people who will get COVID-19 over Memorial Day weekend at the Belmar Beach. There's no question about it, right? And I think we should be using social media to aggressively tell people they should stay away from the Jersey Shore. That's my opinion. I think it would make your life a lot easier if you had fewer people coming to the shore. And it would be, uh, a great plan to keep the residents safe and the non-residents who are coming here to, uh, enjoy the beach. Because some of those non-residents are gonna go back and they're gonna infect their communities, uh, where they live. And, you know, in about two or three weeks, you'll see the numbers going right up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on, please. Jerome, coming to you. Trying to give everyone the opportunity to talk.
Hello.
There he is. Thank you, sir.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, us. Uh, Jerome Beckman. I'm the owner of Beckman's on the Beach at 1605 A Ocean Avenue in Belmar. Um, at first I want to say thank you to everybody in the town for all the hard work you guys have done to open the beach. I know how lucky I am that not only am I opening my business, but I have something to open up to with the beach being open. Um, that being said, this meeting is the first time I had heard anything about there being like no footballs allowed on the beach and things like that. Um, going into effect and unfortunately. unfortunately, I literally got a delivery of 200 footballs yesterday that I guess I'll be packing up for the summer. My question is, is how.
They're on their way home, when they're going home, sell them.
I know, my, my question is, is, is there any way I can speak with somebody about how specific this law is, because, I mean, not only do I get footballs, but you got frisbees, you got paddle ball, you got wiffle ball, you got, you know, all these things, I would consider a frisbee or a paddle ball, these are things that you can, you have to be socially distanced to be using them, you know, is absolutely everything shut down, or what can there be? I know there was some discussion about things being said to business owners, I'm on my block every day on the 1600 block, and I talk to the other business owners, and just to be honest, some of us feel like we're at a little bit of a loss, like we're not really sure what the town is expecting of us and what exactly all of the rules are. Would there be any way somebody could come and speak to the business owners on the beach, or we could get a copy of some of the information so we can be more prepared for next weekend? Because obviously, I don't want to be selling footballs and then have somebody come back and say, why are you selling this? You were not allowed to have it, you know?
Yeah, that's the governor's order, it's out of our hands, we also have, but we also have an ordinance for no ball playing on the beach. But the governor's pretty strict on that, and, you know, we need all the cooperation we can get, because he's made it perfectly clear that if the social distancing can't be in compliance, he'll be looking to close the beach down, and that'll do none of us any good.
Absolutely.
So that's all I can tell you, you know.
We'll, we'll be out to meet him.
Yeah, all right, well, we'll send, yeah, code enforcement or somebody down to talk to you about all, or you can call our business administrator tomorrow, Ed Kirshenbaum.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you again for all the hard work you guys have done, I'm, really am grateful that I can open up when I know so many other businesses are still closed.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Jerome. Standby. All right, trying to give everyone a turn to talk, let's see, Rebecca, please. Allowing to talk, oh, no, Rebecca, you need to update your version as well, so you can X out and update like that, or you can call in, thank you so much for trying. Moment. And we have. Going to Jacob Rogers with the great picture, standby.
How you guys doing?
Hey Jacob, can you just give us your name and address, please?
Sure, my name's Jacob Rogers, I live on 18th and Belmar.
Okay, go ahead with your question.
So I was just curious if you guys had done any projections on what you, on, on what the infection rates are going to be, you know, after, after the beach is open, you know, two, two weeks from Memorial Day, you know, do, have you guys done any estimates on, on what you think is going to happen with the infection?
I have no idea, but I'm sure if they're going up, we'll close our beach, the beach will be closed because the governor closes.
Okay, well, I mean, again, that will be two weeks, you know, with the, with the, you know, what do they call it?
Incubation period.
Yeah, with the incubation period, so it, I mean, we won't really know for, for at least two weeks, but, I mean, I understand that, you know, you, you, you can't really know how it's going to happen, do, do you guys have any idea what, like, an acceptable number of infections would be, like, to consider all these measures of success? Obviously, you can't track people who are coming here from out of state and from, from other towns, you know, we, we won't have those numbers, but looking just at Belmar residents, you know, what, what do we think is an acceptable or a likely number of Belmar residents who are new infections?
Hey Jacob? I can't unmute here. Hey Jacob?
One second. Go ahead.
Hold on, let me get fix this here. Listen. You have to take personal responsibility for your own safety, if you think government's going to protect you all over this country, you have to take personal responsibility for your own safety, you have to make sure that if you're at risk, you don't go to places where you could possibly be infected.
Okay, so, so I mean, what you're saying then is that if somebody goes to the beach and they get infected, that's, that's their fault, or that?
No, there's, there is no number acceptable for any infection, but we can only do as much as we can, we can only plan as best we can, okay? So what, what I'm saying is personally, people have to take responsibility for their own personal liabilities, if you are at risk, stay in your house and wait till everything clears up, but that's probably the best advice anybody.
Everybody's at risk, everybody's at risk, right? Like, and where, there's really no way for, for me to mitigate my own personal risk, like.
Sure there is, if you stay in your house, you'll, you'll be fine.
Well, I, I will be, I'm, I'm worried about everybody else, though, man.
Listen, worry, worry about Jacob, everybody else has their own freedoms to make their own decisions, worry about Jacob, practice your own disciplines, and hopefully you'll be fine, and I hope you are.
I, I mean, I'm not worried about myself, because I'm, I will not be at the beach this summer, but.
Okay.
I am worried about everybody else in the community and.
So are we.
Coming here, so, okay, I did have just another question, you know, you, you, you said that you're going to be closing down the beaches when they, when they get full, you know, or the sections of the beaches, you know, but with people able to sort of come in from other sides of the beach and walk across the beach, if, if a place were to get too full, how would you go about clearing people off? Like, how, how are you going to make the decision of who to ask to leave or who to remove?
Well, what you would do is not, like I said before, there'll be teams of police officers and office emergency management assigned to four sections of the beach, they will be there all day long, they will understand who has been there, they're going to be communicating with everybody, it's all about our community involvement, we're all in this together, it's going to be open communication, people are going to understand what the rules are, and people have been, you know, in the past few weeks have been very, very respectful. At the, this is not rocket scientists, this is communication with the patrons on the beach, with the officers and with the office of emergency management, so we'll have open lines of communication to discuss things with people, and this, this is not as hard as everybody's making it, if we feel that social distancing cannot be achieved, we'll move people to other beaches, they'll have to understand that we're in a, in a situation that we have to take a hold of, so our beaches can stay open and to keep everybody safe. So at the end of the day, it's not rocket scientists here, once we see that beaches are starting to fill up, we'll stop the sale of badges, we'll make sure the gates are closed, and people can wait to go on the beach, or they can leave the area, but at the end of the day, we have to manage our social distancing guidelines, and it's on everybody else to protect themselves.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that, but just have one last question, you, you mentioned social distancing guidelines, are, is that six feet between people, is, is that what, what we're, what we're sticking with for the social distancing guidelines?
Unless you're a family member, you live in the same household, will six feet be exact? I would hope so, but listen, if you've been in, out in the restaurants, I'm sorry, at the supermarkets, people are very conscious of what six feet is, so everybody basically communicates with each other, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you say everybody, that hasn't exactly been my experience, but, you know, there, there certainly is a, a large number of people who are respectful of that, and I.
I agree.
And, and I, you know, appreciate those people, all right, that's, that's it for me then, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jacob.
Hey Jacob, thanks so much, and going to the next, standby, all right, Si. Here we go. Si, are you there? Well, let's try this on muting again. Si, are you there, sir?
He may have forgotten to hang up.
Oh, maybe, that could be the thing, all right, well, we'll try to come back when we can, standby, everybody. Let's see. Okay. I wish this did it in order, standby, and we're just going to go in order, guys, so if you're waiting, thank you for your patience, okay, standby, L K coming in. Are you there?
I am, but Mr. Dasty is not, and that's who I was directing my questions through this round.
Okay, well, we're an hour, three and a half, so maybe, oh, there he is, all right, Mr. Dasty, for you, sir.
I'm sorry?
Hi, Mr. Dasty, my name is Lee Kelsey O'Donnell, I, April, I did email you my full address, just so everybody's aware. Mr. Dasty, I'm just directing a couple of questions for you just about legalities of things, since you are the town attorney and whatnot. Um, I wanted to know if you agree, sir, from a legal perspective, that it is illegal to restrict who comes into the town and who is allowed to buy beach badges?
According to the governor, we cannot restrict who goes to the beach, or prohibit certain people going to the beach, so I think the answer to your question is yes, we can't do that.
Thank you, and then, as a follow-up then, do you acknowledge that it is illegal to prohibit overall number of sales for either seasonal badges or daily badges, regardless of who is buying them?
Is the question, do, do I think we can, I'm sorry, give it to me again, please?
Sure, is it illegal to prohibit the overall number of badges that are sold to the general public, whether they are residents or not, whether they be seasonal badges or daily badges?
Are you asking if a town can limit the number of badges it sells? The answer is yes, is that what you, I sort of turned the question around, but, yeah, okay.
No, I appreciate that, because that actually makes it clear. And so you acknowledge that the town of Belmar does have the ability to restrict the number of badges which are sold, whether they be seasonal badges or daily badges?
I, I, look, I didn't look into the, any great, I mean, obviously, shooting from the hip, but yes, I think that's, we can restrict the number of badges, yes.
Okay, and would you acknowledge that that power could be either through the inherent police powers that are given through the town and the township ordinances, if need be, or through the executive order 143, which was signed by Governor Murphy on the 14th?
That one I can't answer right now, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Do you?
I don't have the EO 143 in front of me, I, I don't know what that said.
What's the relevance of this line of questioning, like, what are you trying to get to the bottom of here?
I didn't realize that there needed to be a line of relevance for me asking a question to our town's attorney.
Well, I'd like to understand what, what you're trying to get at, could you please articulate?
Absolutely, because there has been certain comments that have been made about whether it's legal or illegal to sell or to restrict either daily badges or seasonal badges, whether they be to the general public or to certain people from town or people out of town, and I want to make sure that our township attorney has a certain line and a certain answer as to each of those questions, because those questions and those answers have been posed to mayor and council, rather than to our township attorney, Mr. Dasty, who obviously is much more well-versed in whether something is illegal or not.
So, Miss O'Donnell, I do recall you asking those questions, mayor and council, earlier, you asked.
No, I didn't, no, sir, I didn't, that's why I'm clarifying. Yeah, that's why I'm clarifying.
But, so Jerry, you've reviewed the, the beach opening and operation plan, correct?
The plan set forth by Mr. Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
He and I discussed it, I'm not ready here to recite it verbatim, but yeah, I have a general idea about it.
Right, and, and I mean, nothing there sounds like we're out of compliance or.
That actually, councilman in Car Valley, that actually was not my mind.
I think, I think my client was asking me a question, let me answer his, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'm just, it sounds like you're trying to figure out if we're, if we're breaking the law or not, and.
Contrary, I'm actually wondering if, what, the different alternatives that have been posed, which are saying that some council members are saying it could be illegal, I'm saying if Mr. Dasty agrees or doesn't agree that they actually are legal because of executive order 143, the inherent police powers, I'm not trying to suggest whatsoever, and I do apologize if that is how it came across, I'm not trying to suggest that what the town is doing is illegal, that was not my intention, I'm trying to determine whether or not, what could be done, what other suggestions are available, what other alternatives are available, are legal or illegal in the attorney's eyes.
Mr. Dasty, standby. The plan in place has been reviewed by council, reviewed by the governor, and it is important parcel with all the Monmouth County Shore towns, and that's the plan we have. Mr. Dasty is not your attorney, because you live in Lake Como, so he's not your township attorney, and we're a borough, if you have any questions, you can call me tomorrow, I spoke to you at length on this for a half hour the other day, this is our plan, we have every place, I told you what executive orders are, if the executive order was so strong for the travel ban, police officers would have been able to stop any car on the road, which has not happened, it's not legal, so we have a plan in place to protect our residents, protect our visitors, and continue operations, if you have issues, protect yourself and stay in your home, you have that, that right.
I do understand that, Mr. Kirshenbaum, and thank you for clarifying what my rights are, but I was directed to come to you by mayor and council, not only of Lake Como, but of Belmar as well, which is why I came here today and have posed my questions, and have been allowed to pose my questions.
And we appreciate that, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. So again, so again, I wasn't criticizing necessarily through this line of questioning what the plan in place is by way of legality or illegality, it was what alternatives are available, and whether it was agreed that they could be implemented because they are legal, I'm not suggesting, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line, Mr. Kirshenbaum, of whether or not council, or whether or not Mr. Dasty agrees by way of the township attorney that if Belmar wanted to implement them, that they were in fact permitted to do so.
Well, our entire team has met, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kirshenbaum, but again, I posed my question to Mr. Dasty.
And Mr. Dasty's done answering you.
And how is that determined?
That was what determined?
He's answered you.
I answered your question.
You're done.
Thank you.
My, my other question, though, because I wasn't done, was whether or not Mr. Dasty acknowledges that limiting badge sales can be done through the executive order, if the executive order does give the protection to borough, do so if it is determined to be an alternative plan to what is already in place.
You did ask that question, I answered the best I could this evening at 9:30, but I do not have the EO in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what the EO says or doesn't say in response to your question.
Okay, then generally, what executive orders, if it is delineated, give coverage to the town if they chose to implement that alternative plan?
What you should really do is talk to Mayor Higgins in Lake Como, that's where you live, and if you don't want to come to the beach, stay home.
Mr. Kirshenbaum, I appreciate your comments, and I am exercising my rights to stay home, however, again, I, I posed the question to Mr. Dasty, I understand, sir, that everybody on this line has been on for three and a half hours or however many hours, it's exhausting, but as has been exercised by everybody, we have some fears and some concerns, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm not trying to point fingers.
Mrs. O'Donnell, I answered your questions, I don't know what else I could say, I answered your questions, you're questioning me on the EO, I'm telling you, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
It was just about the general executive order, sir, if executive order powers.
I can't answer that tonight, I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, standby. Okay. Maybe it's not Bart, I can't recall, standby. Yeah. Bart, are you there? Bart, are you there? Unmuting again. Bart, are you there, sir? Not lucky this, they're going to get an email at Zoom, I'll tell you that, one moment, please. Standby, I was there, we got Sheri, standby, here you go, Sheri. Unmuting. Sheri, there. Sheri? It says you are live, are you there?
John, I think she answered questions, or she asked questions.
Yeah, she was on before.
Yeah, these hands are coming up, I'm sorry, guys, maybe they hung up and it doesn't tell me, standby. Try Rebecca, she's the one that went off because she didn't update. Okay, yeah, sure, thank you, councilman, one second, Rebecca, coming to you, here we go. Rebecca, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hallelujah, okay, Rebecca, here we go.
I just have two quick questions, one, we always had garbage cans on the west side of Ocean Avenue, and I noticed that they haven't been replaced yet, I'm really hoping that we get garbage cans.
Rebecca, can I just stop you for one minute, just give us your name and address, please?
Oh, sure, Rebecca Herbert, 407 Third Avenue, Belmar.
Oh, hi Rebecca.
Hi.
Mike Campbell answered that one for the. Unmuted. Yes, John, you have to unmute.
John, yep, I got it. Here you go.
Yes, the cans will be placed out for the summer on Memorial Day. And that's usually when we do it. This week we're expecting a storm, so we did not put them out any earlier. It's windy now. So again, they will be placed out Friday and, uh, ready for the summer on the west side.
Great. Thank you. My, my second question, you mentioned about the beach badge checkers and that you need more. What is the age minimum for the beach badge checkers?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know that. All right. Those are my two questions. I don't envy your positions. Thank you for all you're doing. And that's it.
Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Lowering the hand. And Jess Jones coming to you. Jess Jones.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good to do that.
Okay. Jessica Jones for twelve eleventh Ave. Um, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to mayor, council and Mr. Kirshenbaum. Uh, your job is not an easy one and your efforts have not gone unnoticed by the younger generation of Belmar local residents. You guys are working around the clock with very little sleep and we sincerely appreciate all your hard work. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Same on talking. Okay. And Colleen. Here you go. Let's hope it works. Colleen, are you there? It's gotta be a tech issue on their side as well. This makes no sense. Stand by. Colleen, are you there? Uh, here we go. Colleen. No. Okay. Sorry, Colleen.
I think you tried Colleen before and it was a problem.
Yeah, they come back up. So it looks like they're coming back properly and I guess it don't work. Uh, lowering hand. Where do you go here? Okay, here you go. Share, there's sharing. Stand by. One second. It's all flipping up on me. Now all the hands went away. Now Sherry's gone. Okay. Angela, let's try that. Stand by. Angela, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Angela Pfeiffer again, Fifth Avenue in Belmar. Just a quick question on the online sales, which I know we don't have in place yet. The systems that Bradley and Avon is using, did you say it was something about it was just more costly?
No, we didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, so well, somebody suggested that that one was more costly, but that wouldn't be a concern of ours.
Oh, that's what, okay. I, I just want, I just wanted to clarify that. So if that was something. Would it make sense if that's something, even if it's not our first choice for online vendors? Would it make sense to just kind of have that in the wings as, I think it would accomplish two things. One, we'd be able to track the on, the, the badge sales as a little, sales a little bit more accurately. But the other thing that I'm concerned about is you mentioned we bought, we purchased extra ticket booths to put up on the boardwalk. So isn't that gonna create more lines and more crowds?
We're not putting them on the boardwalk. We, we're putting them, we're taking, putting them across the street from Talbot Lane on Silver Lake.
Okay.
And it doesn't make any more crowds. We're separating our staff so they're not on both together. So we're, it's caution for our staff.
Okay.
The booth is there no matter what. We just want to separate our staff.
Okay.
Years past, we had two, two people in a booth and we didn't think that that was safe, so.
No, I agree. I, I agree. I just, I just wanted us to avoid more lines and just if we could have a system. You know, ready to go, even if it's not our first choice, just because it may be.
Into it, Angela.
Okay. And then, yes, Mike?
We were talking about, we've been talking about the online sale for tickets. I just want to remind everybody, we did have it last year through Viply. It did not work because of our bandwidth. We are in communication with Verizon now who's trying to put in five G. They're trying to upgrade our four G. It is, has nothing to do with the cost or anything else. It has to do with dependability and getting it going. So it's not crashing. Which is the original reason we had to put the ATMs up last year because it kept crashing. So again, we have been looking into it. We do want to go to it. What the mayor and council did this year with the parking was brilliant. It's working through that, through the people's own phones. And we're trying to come up with a, a same system. So they are looking into it, but it is not an idea of cost or anything else. Viply did not work for us last year. They may work for us again, once the band gets fixed and, and becomes more strong, but it's not working right now. So that's where we're looking, that's, that's the problem we're having. We're, we're dealing with the availability of the bands and the strength of, uh, to run our computers and things to make that amuse to, uh, read the, um, ticket sales.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that because I thought somebody said it was a cost factor and I didn't understand why we, why, why would we do this? And one last quick thing about bicycles. I get that we can't bike during the day, obviously. We used to be able to bike early in the morning.
Still, we stopped all bike on the boardwalks, uh, as of this time, uh, just because of the amount of people that are trying to stay to the right. So. We have to visit as things start to clear up.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Angela, thank you so much. And we got Alexis. Stand by. There we go. And you're up and going.
Sorry, uh, Mayor Walter, I see that that, I know we're taking a long time hanging with us for just a little bit longer. Um, uh, Councilman Kirshenbaum, I wanted to ask you a question. Uh, where do you reside?
None of your business.
None of my business. Okay. Uh, Councilman McCracken, where do you reside? Are you a Belmar resident year round?
Oh, God. Sorry, doesn't mean.
You, you have to be to be elected.
Yeah.
Uh, well, most of, some of these are not elected positions, so I just wanted to go through and confirm. Uh, so, uh.
I live on Eighteenth Avenue also.
I will give you a, a wave to you, uh, uh, councilwoman. I, I understand.
Why are you noting? Why are you asking? Could I ask, why are you asking? We're all Belmar residents. Uh, the, the mayor and council, we've all lived here for years.
Well, there was an issue with the, uh, previous caller, it being called out that she was in Lake Como rather than Belmar. Uh, so I just wanted to confirm that everyone who is currently a councilperson, uh, is in fact a full-time Belmar resident.
Absolutely.
Only reason why it was questioned is because she said she has the right to, to question her attorney. She, she lives in Lake Como. Mr. Dasty's Belmar's attorney. I want to make sure things are factual.
Oh, factual. Okay. So, but you do not, uh, you will not acknowledge nor deny that you are a Belmar resident.
He's not an elected official.
Right.
Okay. So he's not an elected official. So it doesn't matter that he's not a Belmar resident.
If you want to discuss what you've been calling the code enforcement.
Oh, you know what? That's all good. Um, that answers that question. So by way of people questioning the decisions that are being made that affect. Towns up and down the shore.
Right.
Interconnected beaches, beachfront, as well as, you know, obviously Belmar butts right up against Lake Como, if I understand correctly. Uh, but she does not have a right to ask questions about this. Is that what you were trying to say?
Has a right. She just can't state that Mr. Dasty is her attorney.
Not her attorney. Got it. He's your attorney. Yes, he's your attorney.
Our attorney, correct.
That's, that's very clear. Okay. I'll leave it at that. And thank you so much. I appreciate all of you being year-round residents such that you understand the situations that all of us are in. Who live here throughout the year. Um, certainly it's a challenge for those who do not have a second house to flee to. Uh, and yeah, I hope that you all do well. Cheers.
Thank you too. Thank you.
Wishing you the best and stand by.
Zoom have a button that delivers coffee to me?
Yeah. We have one last one and, uh, here we go. It's, uh, Sherry. Stand by. Sherry, you there? Did work this time.
Hello?
There you are. There you go.
For you. I'm sorry. My question is very quick. Um, previously you said that, um, you're looking for bathroom attendants and also. Gate attendants. Are both those positions eighteen years and up or only one?
Eighteen and up.
On both?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Very much. Stand by. Hold on. And I have Eugene Kramer.
Hello, Mr. Kramer.
Stand by. Eugene, are you there? Stand by. You've been having issues all night. Sorry for the inconvenience. So Eugene, are you there? I'll just wait because we've been having issues and then we'll have to move on with our night.
There it goes.
There, be there.
Mr. Kramer, can you hear us?
It took like five minutes. It's not about. It's a Kramer, last call. Okay, not hearing a response. Uh, disabling talk.
Kramer?
No, he's gone.
I, I gotta put him aside. You, you can try again, one more time. Seeing no hands. Still seeing no hands. Your call.
April, I'm at mayor. I'm sorry.
Yeah, girl. April.
I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call in favor.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
All our attendees.
Feel better. Hope you feel better.
Yeah. You're looking over the chin, but good luck. Happy birthday.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you to our attendees and remember to practice social distancing. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.